These are 2.5. I have an extra.
Good morning.
Yes.
The Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 Regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and the members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Sheriff Eric Flowers and our county attorney Jennifer Shula will lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for our meeting here, Lord. Please be with us as our leaders, make decisions for our community, Lord. Please place a hedge of protection around our first responders and our military as they're serving our community, Lord, and just be here with us in this meeting as we conduct your business and make good decisions for all of beautiful Indian River County, Lord. Thank you for this day. Thank you for us being here in this beautiful community, and thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance and to give you a piece of my fellow words, which I think are a great reminder to us to be united and dedicated to liberty and justice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, and the next item on the agenda will be any additions, deletions to the agenda, any emergency items. Item number nine, P Papa, the manatee speed zone review was requested by FWC to be pulled off the consent at this time for a later discussion. And I'd like to add item five, D Delta, which is a letter of support for Congressman Mike Karadopoulos for the product, project consideration. Is there anything else?
Move to a previous amended.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to presentation of proclamations. We have a presentation of proclamation designating May 17th through May 23rd as National Safe Boating Week, and we will call upon Commissioner Joe Airman to present that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Yes, this is the boating season again now in Florida, starting up with Memorial Day, and it's always a good time out there. We just want everyone to be safe and careful, and I think you're going to hear about more of that from our fellows over there in the nice sky blue uniforms that have a lot to do with this. But boating is big business in Florida. Like more boats are registered in the state of Florida than anywhere in the United States, and it's a big deal, and we want everybody to be careful but yet enjoy. So with that, I'm honored to read the proclamation. This is a proclamation designating May 17th through May 23rd as National Safe Boating Week in Indian River County. Whereas, for millions of Americans, including residents of Indian River County, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. And whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the United States Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters safely and responsibly. And whereas, safe boating begins with preparation through basic boating safety training on procedures and equipment, as well as outing planning and preparation. Whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and is estimated that a vast majority of these accidents are caused solely by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters whose lives were lost by drowning would still be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, we hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through May 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week and encourage safe boating year-round. We encourage all citizens to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while on the water. Adopted this 20th day of May, 2025, and signed by all five county commissioners. Gentlemen, welcome.
Push to talk. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Airman. Thank you, commissioners. I am Vice Commander Tom McCarty from Flotilla 5-6. We are, area of responsibility is pretty much all of Indian River County. We are the civilian organization that supports the Coast Guard in all of its missions except for military engagement and law enforcement. So you will see us out teaching boating safety training classes, conducting program visits to marine dealers, oftentimes wearing our life jackets, and encouraging all to do the same. In 1958, the Federal Safe Boating Act became law, and National Safe Boating Week became a thing. It got a real boost at the bicentennial in 1976, when the National Safe Boating Council had a huge opportunity with the tall ships parades and whatnot. And if you want to focus ahead into the future, we have what's coming up, the sesquicentennial, I prefer to call it the quarter millennial celebration, next year. 250 years, and I'm sure that the National Safe Boating Council will have something in store for all of us to do. National Safe Boating Week will continue to generate awareness, provide boating materials, energize volunteers, and safety personnel to spread the message expressed in your proclamation today. U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary and Flotilla 5-6 thanks the officials and the Indian River County Commissioners for your continued commitment to safe boating. And we encourage, well, it happened on May 16th. We hope you all wore your life jackets to work on that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. It's great to see you out there. Joe's the only one that owns a boat on the board. That's why I had him read it. I want him to make sure he knows who you are. Yeah. Shift to the left a little bit, a little bit. Thank you once again, team. Next item will be a proclamation designating May 2025 as National Tourism Month, and I'll accept the honor. See Mr. Ben Airman there? There's this guy. I knew there'd be something. Good morning, Ben. Well, as you know, it's National Travel and Tourism Month, and something that's near and dear to me and to all of our citizens, especially working with tourist development and seeing the tremendous saturation in our county, specifically since we have no major theme park, no national attraction other than our great environment and some of the great parks that we have, and just natural resources. There is a draw, and we're very happy that people choose Indian River County as a tourism getaway. It's the reason why we live here, and we like to share it, and also they like to spend a lot of money in our community when they're here, so we also like to make sure that they have that opportunity. So, but I'd like to recognize tourism by designating May 2025 as National Travel and Tourism Month. Whereas, the tourism and travel industry plays a critical role in Indian River County, the state of Florida, and the nation's economic prosperity, with 142.9 million people visiting Florida in 2024, generating over 2.36 trillion in national economic impact and 127.7 billion in direct spending in Florida alone. Whereas, tourism supports more than 2.1 million jobs statewide and over 10,000 jobs in Indian River County, generating $17.1 billion in state and local taxes, and each voter visitor contributing an average of $118 per day in the county. And whereas, approximately 80% of travel-related businesses are small businesses, many of which rely upon tourism marketing, and the visitors of the contributing an average of $359 million per day in Florida's economy. Whereas, the tourism industry powers key infrastructure and attractions in Indian River County, including beach re-nourishment, the Jackie Robinson Sports Training Complex, regional sports, ecotourism, and year-round special events. Whereas, Visit Indian River County, the tourism division of Indian River County Chamber of Commerce has partnered with the Board of County Commissioners for over 35 years, quite some time and a long commitment, to promote tourism and support local economic development. Whereas, tourism and travel are essential to the county's economic health and the quality of life that supports its continued protection and promotion. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that we recognize May 2025 as National Travel and Tourism Month in Indian River County, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the critical role that the industry plays in our community and across the state of Florida. Duly adopted this 20th day of May, 2025, and it is signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you.
And?
Thank you. I have a quick presentation. It won't take up too much of your time.
Yes, we'll lead right into your presentation.
Fantastic. To kind of go a little bit more in-depth on some of the numbers that you gave, and then to show some of our tourism marketing that we do in Indian River County, as well as a release of a brand-new commercial that you'll see for the first time today. So I'm going to talk first quickly about the economic impact of tourism within Indian River County. And just so you know, the reporting is on, the economic numbers are on 2023. The visitation numbers are 2024, but they have to compile everything after the year. So the economic impact numbers that you'll see that I present on are on 2023. I'm Ben Erman, Vice President of Tourism and Marketing with Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. Visit Indian River County. And this is Krista Hoyt, our Tourism Communications Manager, and we are a team of two that do tourism for Indian River County. So a visitor, though, what is a visitor? Someone who comes from over 50 miles of their common evening location, so where their phone is resting, where it picks up that IP address. So the data that we're collecting is based on that phone movement and that IP address. They've stayed for more than two hours, and they have visited at least one POI, which is a point of interest within the county. So in Indian River County, for the fiscal year of 2023, visitor spending went up 8.7% compared to 2022, with an average individual visitor spend of $205 for the time that they're here. That could be for accommodations, it could be for recreation, it could be for entertainment, attractions. And it is also not cash-based, so this is all credit card spending-based. And so your local economic impact over all visitor spending, so that was individual person. This is your overall visitors, families, groups of people. $712.8 million, you'll see that lodging is the top category there, followed by food and beverage, ground transportation, shopping, entertainment, and recreation. And now in 2023, we have 10,720 jobs supported by tourism. In 2022, there was 10,001. So that one person told the rest of these folks to get a job in hospitality and tourism. So that's great that we have so many people working in that industry there. And then your local and state taxes, so Florida residents saved in taxes in 2023 due to tourism tax, $1,910, and Florida residents pay $0 in state income tax with the aid of tourism tax. It's extremely important to know that tourism tax is not paid, our beach re-nourishment, tourism marketing is not paid by the residents, that tax is not collected by the residents. It is collected by anyone that is staying in our local accommodations, whether it be a hotel, Airbnb, vacation rental, and that money is used towards beach re-nourishment, tourism promotion, Jackie Robinson Stadium. It's extremely important to have tourism. It supports small businesses, it supports our beach re-nourishment, it supports maintaining our attractions, things that everyone enjoys, and that's for the entire state of Florida. As you may or may not have heard, there's some things going on up in Tallahassee with tourism tax, but hopefully it'll be worked out and resolved very shortly, we're hoping. But it's extremely important that we have tourism tax and that we're using it to promote our area and to support our businesses. So just a quick thing of tourism marketing in Indian River County. I could be here all day to tell you all of the things that we do and show you all of our stuff that we do. But we, print is still really big, so these are a few of the ones that came out in this current year. So this is, all this marketing is for fiscal year 2425. And you'll see that we create all of these in-house between Krista and I, and then get them sent out. We use a new kind of Y this year has been our kind of brand. So Y Indian River County, and you'll see in the commercial that's coming up shortly here, to explain the reasons why folks should visit, why they should come here, and why it's more than just a beach town. So. Digital advertising is also really big. So digital advertising is huge. As we know, we're all on our phones, we're on our tablets, we're on our computers, we're checking emails, we're watching streaming TV, connected TV, so we're on social media. And all of our digital advertising has now performed this year, 2425, above benchmarks and average for tourism marketing. The click-through rates are extremely high, the impressions that we deliver are extremely high. And all of this data for our digital marketing is from October 23rd through April 30th. Marketing actually did not start this year on October 1st because of the hurricanes and the tornadoes. So we started everything after everything was clean and reopened, and we started everything on October 23rd. And everything is performing extremely well. Our top ads, actually this year, just take a look and you might be able to figure it out, it's the cutest ones down there at the bottom, have performed extremely well. And then we've also done a big collaboration with the Indian River Centennial as well to promote Indian River being 100 years old this year. We also have published new publications, and new publications that are tourism-driven, show you points of interest, and I have copies, we'll give each of you a copy of these today. A Vera Beach Beachside Map, Vera Beach Mainland Map, Sebastian and Felsmer Map, and our brand-new Destination Guide. This used to be called a Visitors' Guide, and we rebranded it as a Destination Guide, because it allows people who also live here to find things to do and know what's going on, places to eat, things to do with their kids. And it is completely revamped, it has a complete lodging guide in it, a county and city parks guide in it for those who like the outdoor activities. And Krista and I put all that together. Everything in here is user-generated content, there is no stock photos. Everything is of people who have visited the area or photos that we have taken. And then now, I did present on this before, but Indian River County is now award-winning, first place in website design, and then overall best-of-show in marketing for organizations with a $500,000 to $2 million budget, and best CVB communications marketing material for last year's guide. The first two are the first time that Visit Indian River County has won those awards. And in your proclamation, you had mentioned that they've been with the chamber and been doing tourism in the county for over 35 years. Well, that was the first time last year that they've won. So we were very excited about that. The deadline for submission for this year is this Friday. We're excited. So fingers crossed that we find out for something this year. So we're very proud of those that, and we both have been here now for two years. So within our two years, we were able to garner two of the, two great awards for the first time, and then another for last year's guide as well. So here it is, a brand-new commercial, and this is the long version of the commercial. This will be condensed into a 30-second, 15-second version that we'll be able to play for digital platforms, on gas station TVs, digital billboards, people streaming TVs, connected TVs, their devices. And it's great. This just came out, and we're very excited to share that with you.
That's it? That's all?
And County Attorney Jennifer, we do have a gift bag for you, because you were not here last year when we did National Travel and Tourism Proclamation. The rest of them, they got one, but I have one for you today. And that's it?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, a gift for you, too. Put this in the office.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. And another. You don't need reading material now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very cool.
Thank you once again. And the next item is, in addition to the agenda, and that's a letter of support for the Felsmere Public Library and Community Resource Center. It's a project, and we've given it an opportunity by none other than annually-elected Congressman Mike Herodopoulos. From the time he was sworn in, he has taken a special interest in Indian River County. He has been quite visible, he's visited us on many occasions, an abundant amount of occasions, and one of the common questions is, what can we do for the county? He wants to maintain a presence, and he has placed an importance on Indian River County. And what he has done is, he's got, as part of his congressional appropriations process, is an opportunity to submit what they refer to as a T-HUD project, Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Project for Subcommittee Consideration. That means that there will be a financial appropriation, if selected, but it has to go through a Subcommittee. So what he's done through staff and contacted with our staff is identified a project that has been thought about in the past, but again, was a bridge way, way too far for many years, and now it's an opportunity to have it addressed, submitted for consideration. We did speak with his staff, and they did advise that there are many projects, that this was not a firm commitment, but it was a commitment for consideration. There are many projects that come from the entire Congressional District, and they're being submitted for review, and we are hopeful that, of course, it is considered. It's a great project, and with that, we have Cindy Emerson here today with her fine team, and we want to ensure that we all know the project in which we're submitting, or submitting for consideration. At the end of that presentation, you all have that letter in front of you, we're going to ask you for support so I can sign off and send that letter to the Congressman's office so that it can be considered, and it's a resolution of support. Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning. We are just so excited that Congressman Herodopoulos saw this project and thought that this would be a good fit for funding, and so we're just going to take you through some of the work here. And I just want to first honor the Felsmere Action Committee Team, FACT, who has been working on the visioning of this for over 15 years, and also recognize our Director of Library Services, Betsy Stenger, who's here, who has been working for at least the last five years trying to get a project going in North County with the public library system, along with our Human Services Administrator, Megan Kendrick, who really wants to expand our services with our social worker. And also, we have full support from our Veteran Service Office as far as being able to reach more veterans out in that community. And I'm just going to take you through a quick presentation of how we plan on transforming access, really empowering the community, and creating opportunity in the Felsmere space. So why Felsmere? Why now? Well, it's a very resilient rural community with such a strong sense of identity. There's a lot of barriers with broadband access, lack of resources for job training, veteran services, and family supports. But just because they are underserved does not mean they're undeserving, and this really is going to give us an opportunity to bring access into Felsmere and really boost the local economy. And so with the conceptual visioning, I just want to show so much respect to the passion and the inspiration behind this project, because to put a public library and then put all of these wraparound services, it's really visionary work. And working with the FACT Committee, which gave us full support last week, we're really proud of the progress that we've already made in bringing voices together. So the Felsmere Action Committee Team really had conceptualized a, a idea for a Community Resource Center back in 2010. They solicited community support, hired consultants for next steps, and meanwhile, our Indian River County Library was having discussions of expansion needs and how to better serve the community in the Northwest County. And so now we're at a stage where we're doing some visioning for what that library could be and getting stakeholder feedback. It's really about the community and getting what they feel is necessary to move forward and to best support the community there. So with that, we have a survey that's out right now, we're hoping to get 400 responses by next month. I know that that's an ambitious goal, but we really want to put that out there to showcase what our community needs. There's such a hunger from early, early results that have come in for workforce support, technology, and shared spaces, in particular, having some community resource space for nonprofits to go out there and do their great work. This is a project that's built with the community, not just for the community. And so with the project visioning, we're hoping to keep the architecture in style with the Felsmere community, so when we bring in design and engineering, that will be part of the, the plans in conceptualizing. What will be inside? Well, obviously, we will have a full-service public library, a veteran service office so we can meet the needs of our veterans out in that community in the Northwest County, human services support. Right now, we have one caseworker in the County Office Building B. We've just been approved to have an additional caseworker, so we'd like part-time to have someone out there that's able to do some of the rental assistance, prescription drug support, food vouchers. We want parent support, some workshops there, really building on parental values, pre-apprenticeship and training spaces. It's really about building a strong workforce out there in Felsmere. And Sebastian, a small business incubator, imagine, imagine for entrepreneurs and for people who want to start a small business, being able to go in and get support from other small business owners. Nonprofit collaboration offices, a much-needed broadband tech lab so people can write resumes, apply for jobs, and be able to access the internet. And then what's really exciting is building off of some of the momentum that's happening around esports. We have a nationally-renowned team at Sebastian River High School. We have students that are getting scholarships for college through esports, and so to be able to give access to our younger children out in the Northwest County and have an esports team through the county, I think, would be magnificent, and creating an innovation hub for drones, coding, some of the high-tech, high-need jobs that will be in the future. A green room, I think that this would help Ben Erman and the tourist team maybe bring some volunteers in and do internships to develop even more videos. A recording studio, I'm not sure everyone in the community is aware, but we've had a lot of musical talent come from Indian River County, so giving them the space to go in and be able to do recording right here in our community, I think will drive a lot of, of, a lot of, a lot of access into Felsmere. And then flexible classrooms and meeting spaces. So the benefits are vast, economic development, bringing accessible opportunities, our veteran services, family stability with wraparounds, technology and innovation, and a community hub, really helping it become just the community epicenter of Felsmere. So where are there some opportunities? Well, you know, Senator, Congressman Herodopoulos, being able to support this project already brings attention to it. So we're really excited that he saw this initiative and felt like this was really worthy of him bringing to Washington DC. We have a lot of local momentum and support with partner alignment, and we really hope to build a model for a public-private partnership through this for funding. So our partners already exist, we have the City of Felsmere, our Veteran Service Office, our Indian River County Human Services, local nonprofits in workforce development, literacy and housing, the Felsmere Action Committee Team, and we hope today you show the same support with the letter. And for alignment, this does go directly with advancing quality of life and service excellence goals through the Indian River County Strategic Plan, and what we know is this is going to help build a stronger workforce and really build on the parental values that we know exist here in our community. And so we are going to finalize and distribute the Community Needs Survey, engaging our residents and collecting letters of support is on, on our table next, preparing for formal funding submissions beyond just Congressman Herodopoulos, and building a foundation for long-term success for this project. So we hope that the community continues to follow along, that they let their voice be heard, the project is flexible and fluid, so as we continue getting community feedback, this presentation will grow and expand based on what we're hearing in the surveys that people want and desire in this space. And with that, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come and present, and we look forward to moving forward with this really ambitious, exciting project.
Thank you for a fine job and being involved with the communication correlation of this process. Now, I'm sure everybody's excited to see this, and we'd like it to be a reality. It will happen, hopefully, with the great hand of Congressman Mike Herodopoulos urging it to happen. Commissioner Adams, you?
Sure, I would be happy to make a motion that we approve the letter of recommendation. And I'd just like to say that this is a very exciting project, it's something that's kind of been swirling around in the background for quite some time, and through the relationships that we've built with our Congressman, we are able to, we have an opportunity to possibly make it happen. So I'm very grateful for him, I'm very grateful for the relationships that the Commissioners and staff have cultivated to be able to have this opportunity, and we'll see where it goes. And again, I think it's really meant to be a reflection of, of what the community wants, and, you know, I'm not trying to count my chickens before they hatch, but I'm very excited.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-o work. Thank you. All right, so we'll sign that off and send it in. Next item is the information items from staff. Well, first I have to do the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 11, 2025.
Your approval?
And that was Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now we'll go on to informational items from staff, and we do have an environmental land acquisition panel vacancy. We have received a resignation from one of our environmental members, that's Jeff Beal, and there is an opportunity, and we hope that there are interested members who would like to be on the, the board and for the Natural Resources Representative, and you need to submit an application, which can be found online, and we'll be happy to welcome you aboard should you choose to be part of the team. Any questions? Next item is public comment. If there's anything on the agenda that you may not be here for the remainder of the meeting, or you would like to speak now, this is your opportunity. Having given the ample opportunity, we'll move on to the next item, and again, we'll be going to the consent agenda. There is an item on the consent agenda, that, Item 9G Golf, that I would like to pull for discussion. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing done?
Move Consent as amended.
That's a motion by Commissioner Adams and seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9G Golf is the Florida Department of Transportation State Road A1A Bridge Replacement and Indian River County Artificial Reef Program. I'm extremely supportive of this, but we have a great opportunity, and I would like staff to explain what's about to happen. We have great partnership and great support, and I wanted to present it to the public.
All right, great, thank you so much. Kylie Anchula, Natural Resources Director for the record, and I have with me today, Binod and Ian with the Florida Department of Transportation, as well as Logan with the Coastal Conservation Association. So these are our project partners, and you mentioned giving an update, so DOT has prepared a short presentation on the project so that we can give you all a briefing. So if you could pull up the, yep.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project to you. My name is Binod Basnet. I am the Design Project Manager for this State Road A1A over Sebastian Inlet Bridge Replacement Project. The project is ongoing right now in design, we are almost complete, the design, it's going to be in June that we are going to finish our design, and construction is going to start sometime early 2026. We have this presentation, I have with me our consultant project manager, Ian Biava, and he's going to run through the presentation right now.
Thank you. Good to see many of you again. Next slide, please. Ooh, I do the clicker. All right, so the project has two parts, which is the bridge replacement, which is approximately one mile, and then to the south of that, we're going to resurface A1A for six and a half miles, and that's represented on this graphic here. It will be done by the same contractor. The design will be complete next month, the letting will be in October of this year, and we anticipate the contractor beginning work out in the field in May of next year. The construction will take approximately five years. This is the existing bridge looking to the north, it was constructed in 1964, and it does not include pedestrian or bicycle features. It is narrow, it has two 12-foot lanes, and hardly a shoulder for safety purposes. The proposed bridge typical section will still have two lanes, will have eight-foot shoulders for the people who want to bicycle alongside the roadway, and then shared-use paths on both sides for pedestrians and bicyclists. This is a comparison of the existing and proposed bridge width on the same graphic, and what you notice here also is that the proposed bridge is slightly to the C-word side, and that allows us to construct a part of the bridge while the existing bridge maintains traffic and connectivity between the counties. Underneath the bridge, we're going to replace the fishing piers, it will go from an eight-foot fishing pier to a 12-foot wide fishing pier, about the same length as today. The navigable waterway, 140 feet wide, will be maintained, and the vertical clearance will be increased from 39 feet to 51 feet. We will have six lookouts on the bridge for people to step out of the way of the shared-use path if they want to stop and look out. We have project commitments on this project, which we have worked out with the State Park and with Sebastian Inlet District, we're going to repave the parking lots, we're going to maintain the traffic, and we will continue to have the flight diverters on the bridge. We have partnered with Indian River County and the Coastal We have partnered with Indian River County and the Coastal Conservation Commission of Florida. Logan is here to speak after me quickly about reefing 3,500 tons of material out to the permitted reef sites off the coast of Indian River County. And we will do that outside of the right whale season. The flight diverters are shown up here on the bridge. They're similar to what's out there today and within the lagoon where I provide additional shoreline protection as well. We're going to provide a maintenance access road on the east side of A1A for Sebastian Inlet District and other purposes instead of the west side, and that's shown here with the arrow on the right. You'll also notice that we are going to put sea animal reliefs on the walls as well. This is an overview of the existing bridge with 20 spans and five water piers. And then the proposed bridge is going to have three main water piers. And then, and then the new walls that we can see, we put up the walls to reduce the environmental footprint. And the typical section for the three are, we're going to maintain the 12-foot lanes out there and provide some more pavement on the shoulder. The existing eight-to-10-foot sidewalk on the west side will remain. We do have a website available that people can put in their information and get notifications on the project. FDOT has a compass, and we definitely followed the community's part of this compass in pursuing this project. Safety message, we like to do on every presentation. It is Motorcycle Safety Month, and you've noticed a lot of Click It or Ticket advertising that's out there today. Binod has already spoken today, and here's his contact information.
Good morning. My name is Logan Kenneman. I am the Assistant Director of Habitat Restoration for the Coastal Conservation Association. For those of you that are not familiar with CCA Florida, we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to conserving and protecting Florida's marine resources. Since 2010, we've completed over 125 habitat restoration projects around the state of Florida through various partnerships, with 49 of those projects being artificial reef deployments throughout the state. And FDOT has provided us a great opportunity to take approximately 3,500 tons of this bridge material and take it directly offshore to a nearby artificial reef site to deploy it to create up to five new artificial reefs. And these reefs will create and provide new habitat for a number of different marine species, which will increase biodiversity and provide relief from the natural reefs within the area. These reefs will also provide a great economic benefit and will provide a new area for local anglers and divers and spear fishermen to access and use on a daily basis. And we appreciate your support on this project and are looking forward to it.
Thank you. And this was the very reason why I wanted this item pulled. I see you have some of your members here, and I wanted to recognize CCA for what you do, the commitment. You do a lot of great events and fundraising, and that occurs. More importantly is you're applying it to betterment of Indian River County with this reef project, and it's quite the enhancement. At the end of the road, we're going to have a great environment, and you're investing through your membership into something that we're going to be proud of, and it's going to be here for generations.
Thank you. We appreciate the support of the commissioners and the county as well.
Thank you. Anything further? If not?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then we're going to move on and thank you again. Well, next item is going to be Item 13. It's the Oslo Road Corridor Study. Recommendations for the urban service boundary expansion and corridor planning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Mr. Chair, Chris Balter, Planning and Development Services Director. And I have Logan Woody. I'm an associate planner within the Special Projects Division. Before we get into the PowerPoint, I just want to thank Mr. Woody for all his dedicated work on this Oslo Corridor Study, as well as the whole Planning and Development Services team. It really took a whole team to get this off the ground. I want to thank them very much. Okay, the Oslo Corridor Recommendation Report. So for today's agenda, we're going to do an introduction. I'll describe what the USB is, the demographic and socioeconomic data for the study area, some land use, environmental constraints, the transportation system, adjacent municipalities and counties, our public engagement, and then the summary and recommendations for the introduction. So this presentation is just a summary of the formal Oslo Corridor Recommendation Report, which was attached in your packet. In 2000, Indian River County identified the need for a new I-95 interchange at the Oslo Road. After years of planning, construction is now underway on the partial cloverleaf interchange along with widening of Oslo Road and upgrading the surrounding infrastructure. The interchange project supports the long-term growth anticipated in the county by 2030's Comprehensive Plan, which linked the interchange to future commercial and industrial development. In 2024, the county launched an urban service boundary study, also known as the USB, in response to the population growth and the development pressures around the area. Surrounding the new interchange was the only area identified in that report for an expansion and, a possible expansion and growth outside the current USB. Following that, the Board of County Commissioners directed the Planning and Development Services Department to conduct an Oslo Corridor Study, which you have in front of you today. This study aims to evaluate the potential for the USB expansion in association with the new interchange and to develop a comprehensive recommendation. And a map of the study area is provided on the following slide. So here is the study area in front of you. The study area is bounded by 5th Street southwest to the north, 13th Street southwest to the south, 58th Avenue southwest to the east, and 98th Avenue southwest to the west.
The urban service boundary was established in 1990, and the USB defines where urban infrastructure, such as water and sewer, can be extended and guides where urban growth is allowed. It creates a clear separation between urban and rural land, preserving rural character outside of the boundary. Growth and infrastructure investment are focused within the USB to promote compact, cost-effective development. The map provided shows the current USB within the study area. There is roughly a 1.9-mile USB gap between 58th Avenue southwest and 74th Avenue southwest. Before it resumes and continues to I-95, there is approximately 1.8 miles from I-95 to 98th Avenue southwest. The table shows the existing land use within the Oslo study area. The land use is not necessarily reflective of the current zoning. Land use categories are derived from the most recent data from Indian River County Property Appraiser and how that land is being used. The most common land uses in the study area are vacant with 83.8%, agriculture with 6.6%, industrial with 4%, and single-family residential with 3.1%. I do want to note that vacant land is determined by analyzing current aerial imagery, and it is deemed vacant if it lacks any impervious area. This is a map of the vacant parcels. The colored areas are vacant parcels within the study area, and then the different shading represents the zoning for those vacant parcels. Primarily, it is agricultural 1 and agricultural 2 vacant parcels. The future land use is derived from the Comprehensive Plan, and it guides long-term growth, and also known as FLU. FLU sets policies for land use type, location, density, and timing for development. Urban expansion also often follows transportation improvements, placing commercial, industrial uses along major routes and residential uses near jobs, schools, and amenities. Agricultural areas can act as buffers between the natural and urban areas. There are a total of 18 FLU categories. However, the four main designations surrounding the study area is AG1, AG2, CI, which is our commercial-industrial, L1, our low-density residential, and PUB, our public facilities. The map and table show the layout of the future land use within the study area and the corresponding percentages of those acres. The next is the current zoning. The Indian River County's zoning districts implement the Comprehensive Plan through development standards. Within the county's land development regulations, the uses for each district are defined as prohibited, permitted, administrative permit use, and special exception uses. All development must follow site plan criteria, being open space, building size, signage, landscaping, to name a few. In total, the county has 34 zoning districts. These range from agricultural and residential to commercial and industrial and conservation. Of the 34 zoning districts, the most common surrounding the study area are A1, Agricultural 1, A2, Agricultural 2, Air 1, which is our airfield residential district, CG, our general commercial, IG being our general industrial, IL being our light industrial, and finally, our RS1 being our single-family residential. The map and the table provide the layout of the zoning districts within the study area along with the acres and percentage for each.
One of the things that we looked at while we did the study area is environmental constraints. That's a big part of Indian River County, is our conservation of our environmental areas. The environmental sustainability is a key factor when evaluating any type of expansion for the urban service boundary. What we look at is wetlands, floodplains, and sensitive habitats that may limit the development and the feasibility of development. While primarily data guides planning, the final determinations are made when the actual development review process comes into effect. So environmental impact studies are required for those areas with any potential ecological factors that are on them. The area with significant constraints are typically excluded from the USB expansion. On this map, you'll see that it lays out any wetlands, whether it be habitat for wildlife and plants, groundwater recharge, flood control and water purification. So it shows all those in the actual study area highlighted in either a lime green, a dark green, and then a blue. You can see that this area doesn't have a whole lot of wetlands in this, and that is the reason why we chose the specific area for the targeted expansion. You'll see on this slide as well, this is the floodplain determination. We have three floodplain areas. We have the area A, AE, and then X, which is not an area of flood concern. Any of the areas of flood concern, once they are developed, usually all of the developers will pull them out of the flood zones so that they will not have to have flood insurance when developed. Transportation system is another thing that we look at when we do any type of expansion. So the transportation includes four systems, which is roadway, transit, pedestrian/bicycle, and the air and water ports. Indian River County MPO leads the regional transportation in coordination with county staff and in coordination with all the MPOs around the state. The key plans that play into these factors are the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, the Conduction Management Bicycle-Pedestrian and Transit Development Plan. The Oslo Road I-95 Interchange will connect Indian River County to the National Highway System, National Freight Network, and the Florida Strategic Intermodal System. I-95 is the county's only interstate in this area that supports long-planned industrial growth and designated opportunity zones, as well as on State Road 60, we have the Florida Turnpike. So the major roads include I-95, US1, A1A, State Road 60, and Old Dixie Highway. The new I-95 interchange enhances connectivity, especially beyond the urban service boundary. The project improvements include the widening of Oslo Road from two to four lanes, replacing and upgrading the Oslo Road Bridge, realigning 82nd Avenue and adding a cul-de-sac to 86th Avenue southwest, improved signalization, drainage, lighting, and truck turning radii, improved access to I-95 for the rural populations, freight movements and emergency evacuation. It supports the Indian River County's Truck Route Plan, linking industrial areas to US1 while minimizing the residential impacts. And any, any of the new development, if expanded, would generate impact fees and support future capital roadway investment projects. Following slides, just provide a visualization of the roadway network. So here's the current county roadway system. You can see on the left, and then the construction plans that DOT is building right now, as well as the truck routes and restrictions, the truck routing plan, and the roadway improvements for truck routes. So public transportation is another factor we look into when we look to expand the urban service boundary. So we know that our GO line has won many awards in the state and also is free still to the general public. So the GO line has 14 fixed routes. It serves key destinations for work, school, medical centers, shopping, beaches, and more. Their operating hours are weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So the routes currently are based on need, and the MPO regularly evaluates those needs. If expanded in the future, there would be more routes to the Oslo Corridor area as development increases and that need increases, then so forth would be the routes placed in those areas. The pedestrian and bike system. The 2024 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan guides investment in safe, connected infrastructure. Sidewalks exist along Oslo Road from 66th Avenue to west of I-95, and pros connections include 58th, 66th, 74th, and 82nd Avenue. Any development that would happen in this area, if expanded, would have to do sidewalks and all of the things that are in our land development regulations to make connectivity improved. Buffered-like bike lanes are planned along Oslo Road, but the area remains a bicycle level of stress, which is an LTS 4, due to the speed limit over 35 miles an hour. Oslo Road and 82nd Avenue improvements are priority projects in the plan. About 5% to 10% of the households near Oslo Road walk or bike to work, among the highest in the county, indicating a strong potential for increased active transportation and improved facilities. Following map illustrates the existing and proposed pedestrian and bike plans, which you can see over on the right-hand side. The existing and proposed sidewalk network, the existing and proposed bicycle network, and then priority bicycle projects, which are all on the screen. This next side indicates all of the water and air port systems. The Oslo I-95 interchange strengthens access to the state and national and international trade routes. It's located within the close range of these major facilities, which is the Vero Beach Airport, Fort Pierce International Airport, the Fort Pierce Seaport, Sebastian Municipal Airport, the Melbourne International Airport, Fort Canaveral, Port of Palm Beach, Palm Beach International Airport, Cape Canaveral Seaport, and the Orlando International Airport. So what this specifically supports intermodal freight access via the Florida Strategic Intermodal System, which is the SIS system. So when we also look to do any type of expansion or study the corridor, we look to our municipalities and our counties around us. So Felsmere is northwest of the study area. We share an emergency water agreement. There are predominant, six predominant land uses that are along I-95. And there, Felsmere has land either within or near two interchanges with these areas. Felsmere's future land use is primarily regional employment, residential, and industrial. The Vero Beach area is the northeast of the study area. The key corridors for them are the Beachland Boulevard, Miracle Mile, US1, which supports mixed-use, commercial, and pedestrian-focused design. Although the city of Vero Beach is not adjacent to the I-95, its corridors are major community entry points as well. And St. Lucie, which is south of the study area, is the, big one is Indrio Road, which is I-95's connect to the south of Indian River County. They're currently going through their redevelopment of that area as well. The dominant future land use near that area is... The dominant future land use near that area is towns, villages, and countryside, and planned sustainable growth, area blending residential, commercial, and conservation. So out of public engagement, so in the last three years of being at the county for myself, we've done over thirty public engagements. Normally, we do six meetings on any particular subject. This one was the same. We did six meetings, both day and night, North County, Central County, and South County. We want to give everybody the opportunity to be able to speak and give their input, and also develop and move forward for the future with everybody's input placed into all of the plans. So some of the key community concerns were environmental impact, traffic congestion, the loss of agriculture, and preserving the small-town character. One of the biggest things in the Planning and Development Services Department is keeping that character of life, keeping that quality of life that we really enjoy, and that has been focused in all of the plans that we've been doing throughout any of the studies that we've recently had. The land use preferences out of the community engagement was west of I-95 was agricultural and industrial and commercial, and east of I-95, parks, agricultural, single-family homes, and medical facilities. There was a strong presence in all of the community engagement for another medical facility in the western part of town, especially either, it was noted, State Road 60 or the new Oslo interchange area, just because all of ours are east of the railroad tracks. There was strong support for a walkable feel, an old-town Florida feel with a lot of public spaces, parks, and landscaping, local shops, farmers' markets, and mixed-use housing. There was a real, obviously, an emphasis on preserving the quality of life and natural resources. That's one of the biggest draws that we have in Indian River County, is that we have something for everyone, and everyone is attracted to this area because of the quality of life that we have. So summary and recommendations. So the background, following the USB study, inspire placemaking, recommended reviewing the expansion near the new I-95 interchange because it would open up that new area for development and also for economic vitality. And the 2030 Comprehensive Plan referenced it as well on the anticipated USB expansion in this area to support job growth and infrastructure needs as well as economic development. So the Planning and Development Services Department recommends that the USB expansion extend from 58th Avenue Southwest to 98th Avenue Southwest, between 5th Street Southwest and 13th Street Southwest. In addition, a temporary moratorium, a six-month moratorium with an option to extend by an additional six months on rezoning and land use changes to allow the planning and land use design and standards. Additionally, an overlay district, creating a corridor-specific zoning, design landscaping, and setback regulations for consistency and quality. And I do want to explain something before we get to that, what a temporary moratorium is. So it's basically like hitting pause on certain types of development activities. In this case, it would be rezonings and land uses. Obviously, a rezoning is when a landowner requests to change their current zoning for their allowed densities or uses, and similar converting farmland to residential areas. And a land use change involves altering the official designation of the area such as commercial, residential, or agricultural within the county's comprehensive plan. The reason why putting a pause on it is it allows us to plan for the development in that area. It also allows us to prepare guidelines, rules, and standards for future development. It also allows us to align the long-term community goals and have an area that's designed properly for sustainable growth and not have it haphazard in the meantime. Something to note specifically, even if you do a temporary moratorium, if you do it on just rezoning and land use, the current uses that are still allowed there and all of the current land use and zoning, you're able to pull any development permits on that with its current zoning and land use. The other thing is an overlay district is a special zoning layer applied on top of that existing zoning that is specific to that area, like a main street or a corridor or historic district, if you've seen them in other places. It doesn't replace the existing zoning, but what it allows is additional rules to promote consistency and quality of development in that specific area. So it would be similar to building requirements or architectural styles, specific landscaping, certain setbacks. This helps create a visually appealing, functional, and unified corridor. These two are most often used as planning tools to ensure orderly and attractive strategic growth for the community. And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, team. Yes, again, I know that we all have met with you and attended many of the sessions and have traveled, of course, but any of our commissioners have questions? I do see a lot of people that we, citizens, that took the time to be at the workshops and have attended, and I'm sure they would like the opportunity to give us some input as well. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank those who did attend. Really appreciate that. It's good to participate. There were a number of people that participated. It was interesting to me because the community doesn't see this as a blank canvas. To the community, this already is a work of art. Open space, preserving agricultural space, and perhaps adding public space, parks, and that sort of thing that they can enjoy. And I really appreciated that. As it stands right now, and thank you to Mr. Walter for reviewing that, in terms of zoning, it's approximately ninety percent agricultural, and in terms of future land use, approximately seventy-five percent agricultural. The change being in commercial-industrial, that would increase from about seven percent to approximately sixteen percent. My question is, one of my questions, is if we do not expand, if we were to leave the zoning and the current future land use in place, and that seems to be what the community would like, would we then still need to expand the urban service boundary if we left everything in place?
So you wouldn't have to do an expansion. However, if you didn't do an expansion, it wouldn't make that area cohesive. So there's currently a gap. What that gap would have issues with is the compatibility between uses. So because it's outside of the urban service boundary, it would only be allowed to be, the highest density is one unit per five acres or one unit per ten acres, depending on where you're at in the urban service, outside of the urban service boundary. Where it comes into an issue is compatibility when you have things that are located next to an agricultural use, whether it be commercial-industrial, which we know we have in those areas. When you have it expanded and you're able to place the zoning and land uses, you can do transitional zoning and a step-down effect so that everything is cohesive and also compatible.
Because I think, you know, what I'm concerned about is death by rezoning, is what I'll call it. And I was even wondering if we were able to have an overlay district just to preserve it as is. That's my, you know, that's my concern, is that we rezone it and ruin it. There wasn't an outcry for more residential. I mean, that was very clear. We don't, you know, and we don't need a lot more residential, and we all know that. We can accommodate residential within the existing USB very clearly. I mean, I think the prediction, if I remember correctly, is that we can accommodate another approximately fifty thousand households, and we're expecting just over forty thousand. So if you want to talk about gap, you know, we definitely can accommodate people who might want to move here within the existing USB. So then it becomes a matter of, you know, exactly what we want to use this for. And I'm thinking in terms of agricultural, it would be great if we were able to incentivize agricultural. You know, one of the things we learned from COVID was that there can be what became, what came to be known as supply chain issues, and we have the ability to grow our own food. Not that long ago, I visited, it's about forty acres, part of that forty-acre and a mule thing, I guess, but it was a, it's a son and his mother, and they grow vegetables and flowers for local restaurants. So it's farm-to-table. And I think that there is a big interest in that, and that could be encouraged. It could encourage more people to go into agriculture. That's one of the things that's been discussed at the Soil and Water Conservation District meetings, that they want, they're looking to work with the University of Florida, so we'd have a strong partnership there. The agricultural extension can help us in that, in deciding the best path if we want to encourage more people to go into that. So that's, you know, certainly, you know, an option, you know, that I didn't see presented here, but it's there. And I know from my own experience that the farmers' markets that we have, you know, are bustling, so, and they're weekly. So perhaps in this district, if we were able to, say, and we were able to encourage more agricultural, preserving agricultural, be able to encourage more, perhaps in the area where it's going to increase or could increase already future land use for more commercial-industrial, that we could have a set farmers' market that perhaps is in operation daily, that becomes a destination, possibly not even just for locals, but for tourists, agriturism. We just heard a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, that people come here, it's not for theme parks, you know, they come here for its natural beauty. So, you know, my concern is that we begin to destroy that, not only for ourselves, but also for tourists. I'm very, very concerned about death by rezoning. Some of the other questions that I had, and these are either questions or just suggestions, they don't all have to do with you, but I don't think, but they all have to do with this matter. And that is, and if we want to encourage agriculture, then we could suggest that the Agriculture Committee could start meeting again, because they haven't met in more than five years. The last meeting was February 6th of 2020, so we can encourage that. We can update the congestion management system plan, which you mentioned, and I know that's not solely your responsibility, that I think is probably a joint project with MPO, but that was adopted in October of 2009. So that's, I think it's probably time to revisit that. And it was interesting to me with the town center, because I read it several times, I looked at that, because, and I even remember the numbers, it was forty-seven percent expressed that that was the most favorable option to them. And these were the development options, okay? And as I recall, there was no option just for open space or agriculture. It all had to do with development. So on the one hand, forty-seven percent expressed that that was their favorite, and on the other hand, fifty percent were indifferent, and that was the largest rate of indifference. Meaning, why are you asking me this? Because I want it to be open space, agricultural land. So, I mean, there was no strong cry for any residential development. In terms of the wetlands, this is something, you know, I really don't understand where we're going with this, because we just completed this vulnerability assessment, and I know that there are all kinds of maps available. It looks like a significant portion of that is in floodplain, and yet we say determinations are made during the development process. I would hope that now that we have this new information, this vulnerability assessment, with what I am told is hundreds of maps, that we would be able to know in advance, you know, what our options are in terms of development, that we don't have to decide if it's going to be harmful, it's going to create flooding, that we can know that in advance. We don't have to say yes, and then it becomes, we already have enough flooding problems, so that's a major concern. And we just heard that last week from, you know, Rockridge. And then they're not alone. It's around the county. So I, myself, I don't see filling in wetlands for development. We just, as a community, we rely on wetlands to recharge the groundwater and to provide clean drinking water, and also to reduce flooding. So these are really important benefits, and I don't think that we can compromise them in any way. I don't think that we should. And we need to place a higher value. I would suggest, and really, I would urge, that we place a higher value on our drinking water. I mean, we were instructed years ago, a couple of years ago now, by St. John's River Water Management District to conserve water. I don't think that's going to end up being the complete answer to this problem of how much drinking water, you know, do we have? And I still think that we need to go back to our USGS hydrological report, specifically for the county, which was completed in 1988, and I would strongly urge that we update this for the whole county. I mean, you know, where it's more and more development, people are not happy with that, and it's creating more and more problems. And you may recall, I'll close with this, with the urban service boundary study, there was a question in it, and it asked, what are your concerns about development? And what came up first was impact on the natural environment. Second, I think, was traffic. But we should never forget that, because the community said that, and that was a while back, but we need to apply that to this. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Chair?
I think, you know, if we're going to embark on this, just generally, I don't think six months is enough. I think this is a big project, however we're going to look at it, and I would say, just say, you know, twelve months and that's it, because otherwise, you can get into the situation where, well, you know, they're late, or they're delaying, or, and then it comes back to you, you know. This is a big project, any way you want to look at it. I think it deserves twelve months. It's been twenty-five years to get to this point, so we certainly can give, you know, twelve months to a very thoughtful process. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, to Commissioner Ross's point, we actually heard that. And what I would say is, in August, the county is prepared to, if there's a special call meeting for the purposes of adopting its comprehensive plan, the year-based comprehensive plan amendments. So you're looking at three months there, two months for the Florida Department of Commerce to review, that's five months, and then we have to then, after we, based on what they send us back, they usually send back an ORC report, or, you know, objections, recommendations, commendations, you're talking another month there. So there's six months right there. So I'm kind of in agreement on that issue, and I do think because during that timeframe, you don't want to make any changes to a state is saying they're blessing your comprehensive plan amendments. So I think probably, and we've talked about it, you know, but we stuck with the original recommendation that was in the document for the purposes of the presentation, but I do think the twelve months is, if you're going to do it, is meritorious, because six months is just going to be tied up right, you know, until we get the comprehensive plan approved by the state, and then the board, then the staff could be working on the zoning and the overlay district, again, if that's the direction in which you're going to follow and approve.
Nothing at this time.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start. This is a big deal, and we need to treat it like it's a, like it's a big deal. You only got a one-time shot to make this correct. This land out here was all predominantly, and all citrus grove for years. When I grew up, it was, it was just Oslo was the two-lane road, and you went out to the end of it, turned into dirt, and then you went further, you were in the St. John's River Improvement District out there, which was twenty-five thousand acres of the finest citrus groves around. So this is not land that's... So this is not land that's, that's like, you know, wetlands, wetlands, conservation land. It's up on a high sand ridge. It, it was good for citrus groves, that's what it was, as far as the eye could see. Anything pretty much west of 58th Avenue was, out that way, was, was all, was all citrus. But what's happened to most of the citrus grove in the county is now that it's become residential, a, a good portion of it. Some of it's been commercial and all the store stuff. I agree with Commissioner Moss and saying overwhelmingly, the, the study said that people really didn't want more residential out there. They wanted things like, you know, go-to places, self-walkability was important, things like that. It's a lot for me to take in. Even when I was at the meetings, talking to people, it was, it was a lot to try to explain, a lot to take in. There's a whole lot of information here that, that what we need to do. I, I just, I don't think we need to be talking about moving the USB further out there. I think our talk on the USB that we had months ago was about filling in some gaps that we already have within the current area. I think we need to concentrate on that. I don't see any need to, to rush this process at all. I think a moratorium of, of a year would, would be a good idea to allow Chris and Logan and the rest of the staff to, to look at the Oslo corridor and see what is practical, see what's not practical, see what works, see what doesn't work. I don't think anybody's in a hurry out there. I know there's probably developers beating down some of the landowners' doors, wanting to sell, sell, sell to us so we can do something. But I think it's a need, we just kind of need, we do need to kind of pause on this. I mean, the interchange is, is not done yet, the Oslo road's not done yet, so we've, we've got some time. I'm sure we could, we could look at another year and, and come back with a really solid plan that's accepted by this board and by the community to say, hey, you know, that's a good idea. Because there were a lot of good ideas presented at the charrettes that we, we gave. You know, the old Florida town, the, again, the, the parks, the walkability, the town centers, things like that. There was a lot of good ideas. Nobody wants Oslo Road to turn into what I'm afraid that, that Endrio is going to turn into and what some interchanges we know turn into. I think we need to keep it, keep it, keep it looking good, keep it right, and do the right thing. So I support option two and the staff recommendations that we, that we implement a moratorium in that area and give test staff the time to, to research it and do what they need to do. That's where I'm at, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Balter, Mr. Logan, and their respective staffs. As we know, this has been an exhaustive program, over 30 meetings, all types of dialogue. I want to first compliment our, our team. Not only in the backup material have they addressed the needs and the comments from the 30 meetings, but as important, the drainage, which is very important to a lot of, a lot of commissioners, as well as the way we're going to be traveling, to include the bicycles. There's an extensive study on the bicycles, which is very, very important. I will tell you, friends, when we talk about 2,300 acres is what we're talking about with respect to the so-called expansion. I think expansion may be the wrong term. Simply put, the USB currently ends at 58th Avenue and picks back up at 74th Avenue. So we have a gap within this rectangle that we've all seen. So you're looking at the infrastructure that the county would have to provide for a mere 1.9 miles to conclude what we now would view as the USB. 2,300 acres, relatively speaking, that, that's not a whole lot. Yes, we go north to Fifth Street Southwest and south to 13th Street Southwest as part of that expansion. Most recently, we've been introduced and talked about a moratorium. Moratorium will be healthy. We've all talked to the county administrator of adjusting that from six months to a year, which obviously is fair. And as important is the overlay. That is going to allow the staff to take their time, do their due diligence. And more than likely, as required by law, we will have more meetings from the public to understand what we are exactly thinking of. Oftentimes, we hear, and I, I heard Commissioner Moss mentioned something about 40,000 or 50,000 people in the next 25 years. I get that, I understand that. But you have to ask your question, yourself a question. Of those availability parcels within the current USB, are they desirable? We know different parts of the county are less desirable than others. That has to be taken into consideration. So with what we have and the extensive study that we have completed over two years of studying this, and again, I go back to, some folks think that this expansion is changing the entire direction of the county, that's simply not true. As mentioned earlier, this hasn't been addressed since 1990. And it is time, 2025 is time to address this. We're talking about a 1.9 mile gap on Oslo Road that certainly connects the infrastructure that we need. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And very much in agreement, I, I don't want to perceive that we're rushing to make change, to open the corridor up, to open the urban service boundary, well beyond what we could handle. That's not the intention. Then the study also supports that as well. Taking consideration, the individuals' needs, individuals' desires, their thoughts, that was all taken into consideration. We hear about agriculture. There'd be nobody more excited than to, than to see agriculture take off once again. Just west of that area, we have conservation land, a lot of conservation land. Out west, we have a lot of industry that nobody discusses, nobody sees, because they are within or deep, deeper into off the, off the State Road 60 corridor. That is a concept that could be considered, but there's no rush, there's no rush. I bet I did hear that we had, like, was it 40,000? We don't have 40,000 parcels. And, but nobody's knocking on the door to get excited to open up the threshold. Once again, if there's, and you did mention it, if there's 20,000 available, buildable, projectable lots, that's a lot. Many of these are a little moist, can't be built on. Some of them are, they are but conservation land. Some of them are not in the process or thought to be sold, to be built. So there are far more limitations. I'm not concerned about that. I'm not concerned about opening up the threshold to ensure that people can just pick on this great county to be able to develop their thoughts. I'm more interested in what our citizens think. And I did hear them. And there, there is cause for concern, which I understand. Nobody likes change. And everybody wanted the explanation of why change, as we're doing right now. So I would like the opportunity to hear from a lot of the attending public that we've been crossing paths with for many, many weeks, if not months, at different sessions. And I know you're eager to do that. So I'd like to open it up to the public to talk a little bit about this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add quickly, oftentimes, we're talked about what we're going to look like, like other areas of the state. And you brought it up, and I had forgotten it, so I appreciate it. 1.9 or 1.8 miles west of 95, and Mr. Balter, maybe you can help me with this, cannot be developed. It is the district, St. John's district. So we're not going to have traffic going way west, like a lot of folks. That's, that just can't happen. So that's, in and of itself, is going to set us up in a very unique position, in a very refreshing position. Mr. Balter, I did read in your comments, a term I've never heard. If you could explain what a freight cluster is? Does a freight cluster, that sounds to me like there would be an opportunity for commerce freight cluster, if you can elaborate on that?
Sure. In the terms of freight cluster, it means any type of freight that's done intermodal, whether it be on US1, whether it be on train, whether it be shipped out, any of those goods that are actually transported freight-wise. We have a number of existing businesses, both agricultural and commercial in that area, that provide to that freight cluster and the overall freight network. Going on I-95, it will alleviate and make that freight network even, work even better, as stated in the presentation, as well as the other areas. With expanding, and if we do expand and do the Oslo corridor overlay and theming and zoning and land use, it allows us to be able to build that area exactly to support the needs that have been there, whether it be both agricultural or the existing industrial and commercial, and then strengthen those, and then add in everything that the public has put in, in the public out, input. You know, one of the biggest things in the Planning and Development Services Department, and as US commissioners, is we work for the people. So we're designing exactly what the people want for the future. You know, if we left it the same, we would see some haphazard development. You got to remember, all of this land use and zoning was developed before the 90s. So we have changed since the 90s. And it allows us to be able to build, not a blank canvas, but build it to something that the people want to see for the future and make it economically viable. On specifically on Commissioner Ehrman and Commissioner Moss's points on the agricultural, that's something that we're handling through our Economic Development Strategic Action Plan. One of the biggest focuses, we did focus groups for every industry cluster, individual roundtables, as well as the public open forums, which I know everybody attended, which were more intimate sessions. One of the biggest things is, this county was built on historic agriculture. And that's something that we have to keep and preserve. Specifically for the Oslo corridor, you know, that can be built into theming. But also, something that's being looked at in the strategic plan is finding more uses that can make agricultural revitalized. So a symbiotic relationship between existing agricultural businesses, and whether it be ecotourism or some type of commercial commerce, that allows them to profit off each other. You know, one of the biggest things in America right now is our decline of agriculture. But we still have, you know, granted, it's smaller than it used to be, a strong agricultural network in this community. And that's something that we want to push forward with, with this plan, as well as the Economic Development Plan.
Chris, just to clarify, when you say freight cluster, you're also, you're essentially talking about the uses of like warehousing, distribution, logistics?
Correct.
And they would also, in turn, support, you know, whether it being further west? Or are you suggesting that they would also support agricultural uses in terms of being able to get our agricultural products to, out to the markets?
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment at some point before we hear from the public? May I make a comment before we hear from the public?
Oh, it's yours, guys.
Okay. I did want to let the board know, and I did speak yesterday with staff about this and our legislative person, that there is a bill that is, has passed both houses and has not yet been presented to the governor, but it's SB 180. You know, I know, I'm not suggesting that you not take any action today at all. That's not the purpose of my comments. I just wanted to let you know that this bill in particular, which is an emergency management bill, has a couple of sections that are very broad in application as it relates to planning efforts, our abilities to do moratoriums, and also to adopt any comp plan or land development code regulations or procedures that are considered more restrictive. And I understand the purpose of this would maybe be to, do a good planning effort to open up some areas. But I just wanted the board to be mindful that we're watching this bill and that we're continuing to look at it. So I didn't want to not speak up and have something passed and signed by the governor that could maybe make us have to tweak what Mr. Balter's proposed path. That's all I wanted to say about it.
Well, thank, thank you for that. And we are aware, but it has not gotten into the final stages.
That's right. Hopefully, hopefully.
Still in discussion.
Get not signed because it's really, I feel, way too broad.
But at this point, we would be legally sufficient to move forward a moratorium.
That was not the purpose of my comment.
It would withstand the test.
Yes, I wanted to just mention that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anything further?
You need a motion, sir?
No, nothing. No, actually, all I'm going to do is give, give the public the opportunity. But you know what? Before that, I see I'm getting urged to take a brief recess. So we'll, we'll take a five-minute recess, collect your thoughts, and this way we can hear from you, the public. Thank you. Thank you. The meeting will now be called back to order. Thank you for your time and patience. As, as we're going to hear from the public, I just want to add a point that this conversation, this discussion, the intent of talking about the corridor study is to look at the corridor from 18,000 feet as we're moving forward. This is not about the urban service boundary throughout the county. Such being the case, if we have a discussion and we move forward with a moratorium in any scope, that moratorium will be for the Oslo corridor. It will not affect other areas of the county. We do have an opportunity. We can go through our comprehensive plan. We have the right entitlement to do that, and we also can look at the urban service boundary at a different time. This discussion is for the Oslo corridor specifically. I just wanted to clarify that because there are some concerns when folks hear the word "moratorium." It, it sounds like it's the end of a discussion for any future. That's not the case. Again, we're looking at the preservation and the moving forward at the same time for the Oslo corridor. Good morning.
Good morning. Richard Bieloski, somewhere, somewhere here in the county, Reef Road, Indian River County. I just, just a question, a clarification.
Right, yeah.
This moratorium, expanding the line, are we talking about, let, let's say you decide to expand the line from 58th to 74th. Is the moratorium that we're talking about then about zoning in that expand, creating the zoning in that expanded line? Or are we talking about a moratorium? If you, I'm asking for a clarification, and I'm confusing myself and you. We, if we agree to expand the line, is the moratorium then on planning within that new expanded USB? If we don't agree to move that line, is there still a moratorium on zoning in the US, in the area inside the USB that surrounds the Oslo Road intersection? I hope that made sense, but I'm, I'm confused, and I'm probably telegraphing that confusion.
Well, you're a developer, so I could, thought process.
So, just to be clear.
A good developer, but.
To the chair's point earlier, we were talking about the boundaries that were contemplated in the study. That's what the moratorium was, you know, one of the options was proposed, just within that study area, that would go from 98th to 58th, and then the north and south boundaries that were established. It doesn't prevent anybody that has existing zoning from coming in and developing under the existing zoning. This boundary, this, the proposed moratorium would be to provide the staff and the board and the community ample time to properly evaluate the potential, because we looked at it from, from the urban service boundary, but going a little bit deeper dive on the future land use, the zoning, and the overlay district, and putting that framework in place of what the community, you know, would like to see. It's, it doesn't affect north of the, the proposed line, that's anywhere else in the urban services area, just that rectangular, that you, that rectangular that you see that was the focus area of this study.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that.
The, the, with the discussion is that, you know, we're talking about the urban service boundary at the corridor, but by the same token, we're looking at the, the services that exist, and now which comes first? Do we move all the services into that position without knowing what will be developed, what may not be developed? And so, if we put a moratorium on the zoning, any discussion of it, cessation of any action for six months or a year, then, then why would we want to move the urban service boundary in not knowing what the prospective development will be? Once again, we've heard many discussions on the advancement of agriculture, the excitement of agriculture. We've heard the, the excitement of, hey, you know, what, what if a distribution facility wants to come our way, representing jobs and prosperity and, yes, that, that's important too. And then there's residential. So, why would we want to move the boundary so that we could not know what we want to do with those parcels and rezone them accordingly? Or not rezone them? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ginny Coons. I live near the Oslo corridor. At least it's going to be affected by it, on the corner of 43rd Avenue and Oslo Road. Let me kind of paint you a little picture. When I grew up here, I won't tell you how many years ago, but let's say it's been decades.
Fine.
We could go out and, besides the citrus, we had lots of yu-pickum fields, where we could go and pick all these beautiful vegetables that were grown here, and then we were able to go home. We didn't have freezers, but we could go home and have fresh meals. If you look at what people today are looking for, there's a lot of people, as Laura mentioned, who go to the farmers' markets. But there's a lot of people like myself who live in an HOA. I can't. I can't have a garden. The farmers' markets don't have maybe everything I want, what I love to go out and pick my own food and come home and freeze it or can it. I'd like to be able to do that, which I can't in my HOA. Another thing that I want you to think about, and I don't know how many people are, interest, have any knowledge of NAFTA. But NAFTA was an agreement that was put into place, I can't remember under what president, but it took, all of the produce, well, not all of it, a good portion of our produce that was being grown in the Homestead area, had to be bought from Mexico. Now, I just spent 32 years living in Homestead. That's where my husband's career took us, that's where my career ended. I have watched what NAFTA did to that community. What used to be farmlands, groves of avocados, mangoes, lychees, every tropical thing you could think of. I used to, on my way home from work, used to go by the tomato fields, and I go, oh, I can go home and plant tomatoes, because they're out there preparing their fields now. That land has now been turned into wall-to-wall houses. Because what was more attractive? Since they were losing their market because of NAFTA, turning that land into houses, which unfortunately Dade County needed, became very good for the money folks. And so it's just so built up now that I'm glad I, that in retirement I came home. NAFTA has now been taken away by President Trump. I believe that from the agricultural standpoint, since there's so much buildup in an area where they used to produce the fresh fruits and vegetables that went up north during the wintertime, because we're in opposite planting zones, we have an opportunity to do that as well. Here, now, we've got the land, and we've got a big opportunity, and we should explore trying to get some of those things going. I think we could also explore getting those yupickum fields back. The ranchers, there's a big push for low, for local grown beef. So I think we need to look that direction, and I would like for you to do that. Don't get me wrong, I'm all for development. We have to grow, we have to grow in order to support ourselves. We are very attractive for what we have in our lifestyle right now, and we need to stay true to that. So I'm encouraged by some of the things I've heard each of you say about that this morning. We also have a lot of different things going on. You have a lot of things going on. We've got the Oslo corridor, we've got the economic development and the 10-year plan, we've got the state issue with their bill. There's a lot of balls up in the air right now, and I don't think we should move forward, or you should not move forward, with doing something long-term until we get all of those things together, and we know exactly where we want to go in the future. And all of them are up in the air right now, nothing has been solid. So I'm asking you to please support the one-year moratorium. I don't think six months is enough. I think that was too challenging. We have more time to do this right. And another thing is, on the USB boundary, we can't support the infrastructure that we have right now. We've got issues with it in that area. Because it doesn't stop, it doesn't stop at 58th Avenue. That interchange does not stop there. It goes on through Oslo. It goes on into the other north and south streets. We need to look at our infrastructure now so that we can support, get that fixed, so we can support whatever development ends up happening in the future. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Good morning, commissioners. Rusty Banack, 6075 Atlantic Boulevard. I may be all over the page here, because I was born and raised here in this county, and I appreciate the comments that the lady just brought up. I mean, I remember Leonard Strawberry Fields and the Hogans, and, you know, our families involved in a lot of that too, with our countryside citrus, and, you know, but things have changed in this county a lot. And just a few things I want to address. You know, I am a farmer. Our family's been doing that for generations, and if there's anybody that understands farming and agriculture, I think I've paid enough dues that I know enough about it. So, a couple comments. You know, farm, I'm just being realistic here, farming for the most part east of I-95 is a pipe dream. It's for several reasons. One, some of our best groves and our best soils used to be east of I-95, where we planted these groves in the past. As you see, there's no groves left, left east of I-95 anymore, period, for the most part. And a lot of that started with diprepies, which is an insect that ate the roots. We didn't have the proper pesticides to take care of that. The pesticides we could use were too harsh, and, you know, I am a farmer, but they probably needed to be banned, which they were, so a lot of acreage went out there. Second thing is, you know, we talk about water, and truth of the matter is, our water east of I-95, most all of it comes from flow wells. These flow wells, through saltwater intrusion, have become so salty, the chlorides are so high in it that you can't use it for farming anymore. That's just a fact. And another fact of water is, we have property up and down, and I think we need to go back, being born and raised here. I hate calling these streets by the numbers instead of Lateral A and King's Highway, and Rosewood and Glendale. But we have property on 66th Avenue and 58th, and it used to be some of those beautiful grove, and the water's too salty. When the county put in their wellfields in the north county, the pressure of these wells, where we used to get adequate water out of them, dropped. There was times where we couldn't pump enough water out to irrigate our crops because of these new wellfields that were put in. So there's a lot of issues with water east of I-95. And I just, the public and the commissioners and everybody needs to understand that that's a fact. And we've tried alternative crops, and between the salinity and not getting enough water, that's an issue. We've tried to pump out of the canals, surface water, and the problem with that is, when you go into drought, these canals get so low, there's not enough water in the canals to pump. Then during wet, during other times of the season, they drop the water level, so that's not a consistent source of water we can use to irrigate our crops with. So, it's a nice thought, but it's really not realistic. Now, for the niche guy that's growing herbs and some vegetables for some of the restaurants, I mean, that's a possibility, but on a big scale, it's just not realistic, and it's not economical for a farmer to try to do that, and that's a fact. Yupicks, one reason that we're struggling at Countryside is we used to do corn mazes, strawberry patches, hayrides. Last year, our insurance company raised our liability insurance from $15,000 to $50,000 to cover events like our fall festivals and other events we had there. Can't make enough money selling ice cream and walking somebody through a corn maze to pay for those kind of increases. So, it's an insurance issue that the yupicks, some kid walks through there and all of a sudden gets sick eating a strawberry for no reason other than he gets a stomach ache, and then the farmer's being sued. It's a real issue, and that keeps so many people from getting into that business. So, there again, I'm just addressing some of the things that everybody needs to understand You know, out in St. John's, it used to be a wonderful thing to go out there on a Saturday and drive out there and see the activity out in St. John's with the citrus trucks going up and down the road, all the citrus going to all the packing houses that were in this county. I mean, it was a vibrant agricultural industry. Now you go out there and it's solar fields and, you know, some ranchettes, but very little grove. Our family, we've planted close to 400 acres out there in the last three years, and we have sold land to conservation easements. We've planted a crop called palm gamia, which is an alternative crop to, that has a protein source. We're spending a lot of money, but I want to make it clear to everybody that farmers aren't making any money off their citrus in these alternative crops. The only way that we get, can do that and keep green space and keep planting more citrus and preserving agricultural land is, to be honest, to sell a piece of land in close to town every now and then. And then we take that money and we reinvest in agriculture. That's what we do, it's what our family does, and if you look at the people that are still in the business out there, that's what's allowed them to do that. So, I just want, if you want to preserve agriculture in this county, you've got to realize the money's got to come from somewhere, and farming is, has not been the answer. I mean, it's, we used to grow 500 boxes of citrus per acre. Now with greening diseases and other problems, we're down to 100 boxes to the acre. If you do the math, it doesn't work. Now, we're, we have tools in there that we're working on to try to increase that, but that's going to take time, and we're going to need to survive. So, you know, I'm just trying to cover a few of the things that were brought up earlier. So, I'm, we've got lands over by Oslo. I'm all for a moratorium for a year to figure out what to do there. I'd like for the commission to consider, to fill in some of these gaps that we have next to the urban service area, possibly between State Road 60 and 510. Properties that are on four-lane roads, you've built the infrastructure, there's schools, and there's areas up there that make sense to put housing for the short term. So, I think we can accommodate a lot of this growth in this county. All my family lives here, all my kids live here. I want to see it grow responsibly also, but it's a balance of all our needs. I mean, as the lady said, I mean, she's not opposed to growth, it needs to be done responsibly, but at the same time, I just, everybody needs to understand the issues that agriculture and some of these other things that we'd like to say is possible is really not when it comes down to it, and everybody needs to understand that. And with that, I will end my comments unless there's any questions from y'all.
No, no, thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Banack's perspective on agriculture. I think being realistic about it is very helpful when we have these discussions.
And Rusty, thank you for pointing it out. There's also room for microfarms and smaller farms. There's a good half a dozen in the county that if I don't grow it, I'd go to them because they're using best management practices, they're using the right resources. Be aware, when we buy something that has a foreign label on it, you may be very surprised at what they use for fertilizer. It's real. So, we do have the room for those type of microfarms, small farms, that can service the community, and they are on the rise, and we appreciate that. We appreciate what your family has done throughout the years with that, with small farms. Thank you.
My name is Ruth Collier. I love following Rusty because our, my husband and his dad were at University of Florida together, and we were rushed, we were thrown out of, my husband was a farmer his whole life, and we left Broward County for the very reason that it got so crowded. He had 22 in his graduating class, there's probably 1,000 now, way too many people. However, I am for expanding the service area. We just sold our last little grove to Vero Classic School, which is just a little bit south of Oslo, one block south of Oslo, 158th. It's going to be a great addition to this community, and it's going to mean that people would love to live there where they could, children could walk to school. So, just keep that in mind, that even though there are some places to build yet in this county, they're not necessarily where people want to live. So that's my plea for expanding the service area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Once again, any action taken today is in regards to the Oslo corridor, and that's why I appreciate the perspective. We could be with justified reason to rezone or reestablish, expand at other times, but today's discussion is specifically for the Oslo corridor. I know I haven't drawn you up.
Good morning. My name is Donna Keys, and some of you know me, but some of you don't. I've been a resident of Indian River County for over 50, almost 50 years. I can't tell you, I can't tell you how many boards, nonprofits, everything that I could have done in the last 40 years I've been involved in this county. And last but not least was the over 12 years that I spent on Indian River County's Planning and Zoning Commission. And today you have before you a really major item, and you have a choice. Expand the urban service boundary, or don't expand the urban service boundary. And the community, obviously, from what Commissioner Massa said, and from what I've read in your reports, gentlemen, is that the community is here for not expanding it. They wanted to maintain agriculture. And I understand, like Randy, Rusty says, agriculture may not be so great, but there's also a lot of research going into other products that we can produce here. I know avocado, avocados is one thing that they're looking at, because most of our stuff is coming in from Mexico. Darryl said that it's only about a 1.9 mile gap. Well, as far as I'm concerned, Darryl, I think two-mile expansion of the urban service area is a, is a big expansion. I don't think that's a small expansion, that's a very expensive expansion. And Rusty talks about water issues, and that just confirms what Laura was saying about, yes, we do have water issues, and adding more people is not going to help that. We have two other intersections, interchanges in Indian River County, 512 and Route 60. We haven't done a very good job of Route 60, it doesn't look very nice. When I was on P&amp;Z, we used to always say, well, we just don't want to look like 192. Well, now you're saying we don't want to look like Oslo Road, so it's getting, it's getting pretty bad. We are starting with like 192 and 60. So, if staff wants to create, increase the urban service boundary area, do a moratorium on rezoning, and do an overlay district, I'm sure that we could get a committee together to help work with staff to, like... to help work with staff to, like we did with the Growth Awareness Committee. But if the other decision is made not to go with the urban service boundary expansion, which is what we prefer to see, that you can look at this again in two or three years, see where the pressure is being put on you in two or three years from that interchange. What do you maybe need to do at that point in time? Instead of just going out and doing something now without really seeing what the impact that interchange is going to have to this area. So we'd like to see you keep agriculture, not expand the urban service area, give it a couple of years to get some more education about what that impact is going to be from that exchange and then do what needs to be done at that time. And today I'm here representing the, I'm co-chair of the Land Use Committee for the Indian River Neighborhood Association. So I want you to know we are back and we are involved. Okay? Thank you.
So again, I'm Richard, still Richard Bielowski. You know, every time I come here and I see y'all sitting up there, I realize that these decisions you have to make in the course of a short meeting affect all of us for a very, very long time. And we're all living with decisions that were made by county commissioners going back and the last, we're almost at the centennial, the last 100 years, that we're not also happy the way we're living with them. It's, I see how challenging it is. And I echo what Donna said. I'm a little nervous, this moratorium concept, because county attorney brought up that the whole issue, idea of a moratorium could be at risk. So therefore, it would seem to me to make more sense to just stall this. Doesn't say we're never going to move that line, we're never going to expand, but we're under no pressure. I mean, we have a certain population growth we have to accommodate in a very long period of time. So two or three years is going to have zero effect on that. I, you know, I don't think we need more housing in the Oslo Road corridor. I don't think we need large areas to park 18-wheelers. I'm not sympathetic to those things. I'm very sympathetic to what Rusty said. That's a challenge. And I'm thinking back, was it 2006, '07? Maybe Commissioner Flesher, you were up there, certainly Commissioner Adams, your mom was sitting up there. And it was in the old building and there was a room full of people who were pounding on the table saying, we want a moratorium on growth in the county. And I got up and said, coming from where I do, which is on the other side of the country, Commissioner Moss never likes to hear me mention the name of that state, but I knew more, I had more experience with moratoriums than everyone in that room combined. Moratoriums have unintended consequences. This particular one is different. And the unintended consequence of that was people like Rusty, who owned agricultural land, felt that they would lose their right to ever see that land developed if they had a problem with agriculture. So they all rushed annex to the city of Felsmere. And we lost our ability to control our own future forever because of that. So, you know, what Rusty is concerned about is very real. I know nothing about farming, other than two nights ago, I watched The Greatest Little Farm on Amazon, which was a pretty interesting, actually, you should watch it. It's about restoring a sustainable, biodynamic farm in and amongst large monocropping agribusiness farms. But I have no idea whether that makes any sense or not. But the one thing we haven't talked about, we didn't talk about many, many years ago when we talked about moratorium, we aren't talking about now in the context of Rusty's issue, and it relates to a more holistic view of how we plan the county, is transfer of development rights. You know, sprawl is a dirty word here. I think we all agree to that. Unfortunately, density also is a bad word. And, you know, you can't hate the problem and the solution at the same time. We really need ultimately, in the context of the greater county, to think of some potential areas that could be receiving areas for greater density and allow people in ag-zoned areas to sell their development rights to folks who want to increase density in the receiving areas. That would be equitable. It would solve other issues that have to do with traffic and on and on. Now, to get there, I think, you know, if we put a pause on this, we have a very talented and competent planning staff. I'd like to see some pictures and examples of what this could look like. Because, you know, we always talk about these things in very abstract terms. We have the highest density in this county is 10 dwelling units per acre and there's about enough of that to fill this room. The rest of our highest density is eight dwelling units per acre. And if I were to come up here and say, I want to do something at 15 dwelling units per acre, there'd be a general panic. But it's, but we don't understand what that means. It's just a term. It sounds like it's twice as much, so it's twice as bad. We need to be more educated about the implications of planning on a more holistic scale that affects the whole county. It is not the time right now to rush to even filling that 1.9 mile gap. It just, it just does not make sense that we're under any pressure at all to do that. So let's sit back, let's look at the big picture. Let's, you know, let's do the right thing. It's not easy. I don't even know if you can do the right thing because it's so complicated, but sure can do, take the steps to move in that direction. And those are, to some extent, educational steps for the planning staff to educate us, the public, to educate you, the decision-makers. And then from that perspective, let's see what we do. Oslo Road intersection, it's great. It's going to give us another escape route. It's going to take the pressure off of State Road 60. For right now, that's enough. Let's not consider extending that line now. Let's not talk about extending the line and having a moratorium. Let's just simply put a two- or three-year pause on this and revisit it. The staff, I mean, Chris is doing a great job and he's been here three years. Let Chris come up and say, I've been here six years. Let's have a more seasoned county administration before we take on big decisions that we will live with forever. Thank you.
Rich, thank you. You make a great point, as you usually do. I'm not surprised. However, when you say two to three years, the reason why we're here today is the culmination of the study. In addition, it's anticipated that the corridor will be, access will be completed in about a year and a half's time. And it was about planning and thought process of what can be done. Well-agreed. And again, I'm very supportive of a moratorium for the Oslo corridor at this time. But to say two to three years, that may go well beyond what we can talk about renewable if we went with a 12-month moratorium. Again, to get over that word, moratorium, which is cessation. If that's the case, we would want the ability, or we would need the ability, to revisit it and it could be extended. Or at that point, a juncture, at that juncture, a decision may have to be made for the future of the county. We do the same thing with, I hate to bring it up, I did bring it up when I said about the agriculture from foreign lands. We do the same thing with biosolids. And a lot of people question, why do we have a moratorium on biosolids each and every year? Why don't we just ban them? Well, we have to do it on, we're constrained, so we do it on an annual basis. And I would be supportive of doing that with this scenario because quite frankly, the corridor is not going to be ready for another year and a half.
Maybe I shouldn't have said two or three years. Maybe I should have just said, pause and wait. I don't see that we're under any real pressure to move that line from 58th to 74th. There's no gun at our head to do that.
That's correct.
If you want to do a corridor study, drive down Narcosi Road from 192 to 528. It's, you know, it's a corridor. It is, that 20 miles will take you an hour and a half between 4:00 and 7:00. And it's, and if you look at it, you know, piece by piece, there are well-designed buildings, interesting projects. It's not poorly designed, but there was no sense, holistic sense of how it was going to work. And it's just frankly unpleasant. And I just don't see how there's anything that we really need to do right now between 58th and 74th. And again, I go to this notion of transfer development rights, looking at areas of higher density to meet whatever housing needs we might have in the future. But I just think it's a mistake right now to rush to do this and then impose a moratorium that could possibly technically find itself in trouble at any rate. And, sorry, my last point, the public input, I wasn't thrilled with the way it was presented. You want a high-rise building, you want a farmhouse, you want sprawl. I mean, that was, it wasn't, it was confusing because they were just pictures. They weren't a real plan on that narrow strip of land. I don't think any of those things really applied to that narrow strip of land. So I'd just like to see more thought go into this and more of a holistic approach to solving these issues of housing and keeping in mind real problems like Rusty Benak has. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Many felt the same way that when, in the presentations, that it was about having three food groups on a plate and having to be forced to make a choice of which one you prefer as opposed to going to a buffet and seeing what's truly available out there from a far, a higher distance from the actual project. But thank you for those comments.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? I did want to just kind of insert that really a year is the maximum moratorium that you can place on a roof without getting into taking an Burt Harris problem.
Yes.
Okay. Just throw that in there in case people think we can just do this forever.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Chair, if I could speak.
Oh, you can, sure.
I just wanted to make it clear.
Mr. Palladon's coming up to the podium.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joseph Palladon. I'm president of Black Swan Consulting and I've also, in the previous life, I was a developer here for several years. And the first moratorium I was familiar with, and Commissioner Flesher was here at the time, Gary Wheeler proposed a moratorium. And I proposed putting a hold on it and I put a group together called the Growth Awareness Committee, which I chaired for 12 years. I also was the chair of the Land Use Committee for IRNA for five years before Richard took over. And we all have the same thing. I'd like to give you a couple of quotes, the way I think it should be going forward. Number one, I think that new development should pay for itself. Now, we can make new development pay for itself, guaranteed, and Mr. Flesher knows that. We have a hard time making new growth pay for itself. Two different things. And it is the way it is. But, you know, you talk about expense. Listen, we have a product here. We have the land. We have Indian River County, best county in the whole damn state. There's a demand to come in here and build in this land. Well, through developers' agreements, we make the development pay for itself. The time to negotiate is when the money's on the table. When these guys want to develop here, we make sure we get everything we want out of them. We get every dollar out of them. Make them, they're going to make the money off the development, so let them put the money into the infrastructure. And I think through developers' agreements, we can do that. Now, I'm also part of IRNA for 20 years. We have a little saying there, we'd like to control development through quality, not quantity. And see, that's a big difference. You can't have too much quality development. You've got to get the word quantity out of your head. You can't control development through quantity. I've been asked several times, Mr. Palladon, why do you guys have such terrible plans for future development? I said, because we plan on no growth for future development. That's why we have these poor plans. Now, see, what you're saying today, you've gone beyond that. I really appreciate that. But I think that the Oslo corridor, putting a moratorium on it, Joe, you might want to write this down, I approve that. I support that.
Wow. I think you're reflecting back to about 20 years ago.
At least.
Yes.
But, you know, that's a different thing. And Oslo Road's going to have, you know, it's going to be I-95, exit, et cetera. We know that. But when you talk about moving the urban service line, I also am chairman of the Urban Service Line Awareness Committee. You've got to look at how, for another three or four years, we're going to be worth more money because we're going to be developing out there. So if they know what the future is, it shouldn't be a secret. And Joe, you remember back when 43rd Avenue was a big deal? I mean, I spent a lot of time on 43rd Avenue with Diane George, et cetera, right? So, I mean, there's a lot of things we can do and we need to make new development pay for itself and we have to have quality development. We can do that. We just need, we need to make sure we do the right design. You have to have a master plan. You know, several years ago, Ruth Stanbridge, Dr. Cox and myself, we designed, we designed a master stormwater plan. I think it's still on a shelf in the old building someplace. They said it was too complicated. You know, when I developed overseas, I delivered in the islands, if we didn't have surface water storage, we wouldn't have any water. And here, you know, God gives us the answer. He rains on us. We pump it back out into the oceans. We need to capture that water and use that water for potable water. And we can do that. It's just going to take maybe a little bit of intelligence, a little more work. And as far as having a lot of land to develop already, you've got to realize, 10 and 20-acre parcels are just about useless. I can't give you what you want to see in a 10-acre parcel. You know, they put a road down the middle, put a lake on one side so we can fill the lots, and they build houses on both sides of the road. I'm sorry, I'm not excited about that. That's what you get out of a 10-acre parcel, or a 20-acre parcel. So by moving the urban service line in the right places, not Oslo Road, you've got to have a bigger piece of property to get the open space and get the setbacks and get the landscaping and turn lanes and everything that you want to make things better. You can do that with a bigger piece of property. I cannot do it on a 10-acre piece of apartment. And I still have several in the county now that I own, unfortunately. And I guess I'll develop them somehow, if that's what I do. But, you know, developers, you've got to realize, most of the developers are just greedy people. I mean, make that statement. But that's okay. I dealt with developers from out of town for years. Most of them don't like me, but that's okay. You know, but if you know what they want and you know what we got, we use that to our advantage to get what we want from them. If they're going to come in here and buy a piece of land, do the development, they're going to make lots of money on it. That's when we negotiate to get what we want out of them. We've got to get every little bit out of them we can at that time. I say, the only land that I really didn't worry about was a piece of land I already developed. Other than that, the more land you leave set open out there with no holdbacks or no setbacks or no legal, or no rules and regulations, the more you open yourself up to it being developed the wrong way. You know, the most famous name in development history is the Burt Harris Act. Well, I've won cases on both sides of that. Burt Harris Act, fine. They use that to their advantage. But we fought that and we found different ways to use it to our advantage. And that's what you have to do. You have to outsmart these guys. And the best way to catch a thief, you hire a thief. The best way to beat out-of-town developers, you hire a developer, which the Growth Awareness Committee did with me. And I was chairman of that committee for 12 years. And we got things out of them that, listen, they'd have been better off hiring two of the highest-priced attorneys in Miami and come up here and beat us. Because literally, we can't afford all these lawsuits. But I negotiated. We negotiated things. We got setbacks, we got all kinds of stuff. Take like zoning, RS6. Houdini couldn't get six units on RS6 zoning. Not enough. We said, okay, we're only going to give you three units an acre. We would have been sued, we would have lost. But because we went in and I said, okay, we need 7.8% open space, we need setbacks, we need buffers, we need, we need to add all that up, they couldn't get six units an acre. So that's the way you go forward in negotiating. Meanwhile, they paid for the infrastructure. Because it's not fair to make the people that live here in Indian River County, that have lived here a long time, pay for new development. It's not fair. It's not the way it should be. Make new development pay for itself and control development through quali- quality, not quantity. That's my advice. But I want to go on record, I support the moratorium on Oslo Road. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Palavan. Appreciate you.
Just one last comment. Rusty Banack, again, I echo his quality over quantity. And the only thing is, I think we all have ridden up the interstate and up the turnpike and seen by Clermont where you get these subdivisions, every house looks identical. And that's one thing that this county can do, is make sure these developers are given enough variety in these neighborhoods that every other house doesn't look the same. I mean, everybody likes some individuality and doesn't want their house looking the exact same as their neighbor. So, I mean, I think that's a simple enough thing. As he said, the developers will make a lot of money. For them to throw another model or two in a neighborhood so they all don't look the same will add a lot to this county.
Thank you. Mr. Polta, you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to touch on public engagement a little bit and the structure of the public engagement. First off, I want to thank all of the public that came out today and also all of the public that came to the meetings. We had over 400 representation from the community. The reason why it was set up in such a way to offer broad strokes at the canvas was because of how early it was in the actual planning process. You know, we wanted to get a look and feel of if it was even an appetite for the community to have an expansion or have a plan. You know, in planning, if you don't have a plan, haphazard development happens. And that's one of the things that we really don't want to happen in this county because we have such a quality of life. It truly is a place for everyone, where you can go to a rodeo in Felsmere, go to the beach in Vero Beach, or enjoy many of the park systems that we have. So with a plan in place, we're able to see that to fruition. That being said, there will be, if approved in any type of way regardless, there's plenty of other opportunities for public engagement that will drill down more specifically, whether it be corridor or zoning and land use, specific to those subjects. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and also the public's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, Chris, we currently have the county infrastructure up to 58th, and then it resumes back at 74th. So the gap we have here does not have the current adequate infrastructure. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And also, Chris, and you're consistent with our comp plan and at ease, more of an ease for you to do the planning in the future to include the moratorium, having a gap could make your planning purposes a bit more challenging.
That is correct.
That is correct. And I think, Mr. Chairman, with being consistent with the 30 meetings we've had, in addition to understanding the comp plan studies that we've had, someone mentioned, take a break for two or three years. Well, the moratorium is actually, as council has mentioned, a year. So now we're between two and a half to three years to one year, for sure that we know. And that one year, by the way, could be extended if needed. And for those reasons, Mr. Chair, I move approval of the expansion of the USB in the Oslo corridor in addition to the one-year moratorium.
Restate that? Restate that. I didn't hear you.
So I move, which is option one, to extend or close the gap, if you will, of the USB on the Oslo corridor to include from 58 to 74th to Fifth Street Southwest North, 13th Street Southwest South, that 1.9 miles, to be included with the one-year moratorium to include the overlay. Is that, Mr. Administrator?
I apologize. Are you saying everything east of 95, that gap from the existing industrial to 58th Avenue, and you're not talking about the west side? I'm just trying to clarify.
No, no, I'm talking, yes, of course, to 98.
Okay. So then the other item I would ask Commissioner Vice Chair is, are you also looking in terms of if we're doing, if you're recommending, one, the expansion, two, the moratorium, which goes about the rezoning, related to the rezoning is the development of the overlay district? Are you talking about that as well, number three, which is the corridor overlay district?
Yes.
Which would identify the specific zoning uses, I think, whatever, the cohesive plan, if you will, is what?
Yes, sir.
I think that was described by somebody. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
So did you want to restate your motion to include one, two, and three?
Yeah, we can do that as well, which would include what the administrator said, to include the overlay, to include to 98th Avenue, back to 58th Avenue, and north and south from Fifth Street Southwest to 13th Street Southwest.
So you don't want to include it to 98?
Yes, I do.
He's trying to make a motion to move staff recommendation.
Basically. But the staff recommendation didn't have the moratorium in that particular item.
You want to place the moratorium?
It did, but it didn't have four.
Expansion of services.
Correct. Over the 98 to 58.
Staff recommendation is one, two, and three.
Correct. But the only change to that, number two, would be instead of six months, it would be one year. That's what Commissioner.
It would be number two with?
One, two, and three. Would be one year.
Number two with a one-year moratorium.
Right.
Which would give resources. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I hear a second.
On staff recommendation, it's correct, right?
On option number two.
It was a one-year moratorium.
One-year moratorium with expansion of the gap.
And I believe in previous conversations, like I said earlier, filling some of these gaps was our intention.
That is correct.
Not expanding, but filling some of the gaps, whether it be, you know, getting this subdivision off a septic onto sewer, things like that, filling gaps that were like this?
And in addition, that was also to address, we had extended the policy to be able to include if you were within 1,500 feet, that you could connect two services at your expense. That was done quite a few years ago. And that would resolve most of this issue as well. If we were to do that, that's, I'm sorry, I was drawing. If we were to do that, then that would eliminate all of those individuals who were seeking service, even if they are still ag, that they would be able to get services to that area, fill in the gap and making the urban service boundary a flat line as opposed to the puzzle piece that it is now.
That's correct. That's correct.
Is that a fair assessment?
That is. That's correct.
Okay, so.
I would agree with, you're right with that, what Commissioner Law said. It would make planning a lot harder with that gap there.
That's correct. So, all right, so we have a motion from Vice Chairman Law, seconded by Commissioner Airman, to fill the gap, option two, while we place a one-year moratorium on any rezoning for the Oslo corridor in remainder.
So that's west 98 and east of 58.
West of 98.
To include the gap.
Well understood. And Counselor?
My understanding is the motion is to move staff's recommendation, but to extend the temporary moratorium to a year instead of six months.
That's correct.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, and well understood. Any further comment? All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Motion passes, four to one, with Commissioner Moss dissenting. Thank you.
I have a question. What's the next steps on this, Chris?
Sure. So the next steps on this, we'll be bringing back an ordinance for a temporary moratorium on exactly what you guys have just approved. And then following that, we will get into the corridor study. We'll be planning out public meetings for that, as well as all the land use and zoning data. And then also be doing the expansion of the USB, which we'll be doing after the year-based amendments. That is a comp plan amendment, so that will be done after the actual comprehensive plan, year-based amendments.
I would add, based on some of the comments I heard, is we may augment staff's, you know, efforts with one of our existing consultants to produce those diagrams and help with the overlay district. So there's a visual component to that. I just want to put that out there so we can, because I don't think we have those services available in-house.
There is some funding in Planning and Development Services budget to be able to assist with some of the harder lifts with the visuals and the socioeconomic and economic development in that area, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate everybody's time today and input. You make a difference. All right. Next item is Public Works. I guess there'll be some changes in the format of the room. In Public Works, we have consideration of a resolution electing the use of uniform method for levy, collection of enforcement of non-adverbal assessments for street paving in the Oslo Park area. It's still good morning. You got moments to go.
I was just looking at it. Greetings and good morning, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Adi Javed, Republic Works Director, here to provide a quick update on the street paving and drainage improvements in Oslo Park area project. And just wanted to give a quick update. Based on the passed direction from B O C C back in May of 2023, the Commission has asked the staff to go back and do the design and then come up with the construction cost. So the construction cost that was based on that design was shared with the Commission back in September of last year, and that the construction cost was about $14.75 million that equates to about $1,640 per parcel for the next 20 years in assessment if we were to move forward with the MSBU assessment. The other thing that the Commission had asked the staff to look into was to get a 67% approval from the residents. As a result of that, staff went back and organized two public workshops and outreach meetings with the residents of the affected area. One was done in December of last year, and then the second workshop was done in April of this year. We also sent out survey cards to the residents. There are about 500 parcels, and we received 55 responses back from the residents, whether they were in favor of the project or not. So 55 responses equates to about 11% response when you're looking at, out of 500 parcels. Out of those 55, 22 were in favor of the project and 32 were against the project based on the $1640 breakout assessment for each parcel. So based on that, about 60% of the residents are not in favor of the project, at least based on these new cost estimates and the assessment. So at this point of time, the Commission has two options. Based on this feedback, looks like, you know, at least there's not enough support for the project as it is being designed right now. So one option is to basically, you know, close the MSBU paving initiative. And the second option is to basically move forward with getting the assessment project created and initiated. The next step for, if the Commission decides to move forward with the assessment, what project would be to, you know, then organize a public hearing and then move forward with that. So those are the two options for the Commission to consider today. Obviously, you have the staff report with initial backup information, including the comments from the residents. But overall, you know, right now, about 60% of the 55 people who responded to the survey are not in favor of the project, the way it is being designed. And I stand for any questions that the Commission may have.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank Adi and the staff and their patience. As many of you know, the Oslo Park paving initiative started years ago under Commissioner O'Brien, probably before that with others. I will tell you that I feel that I'm somewhat intimate with the residents of Oslo Park and the hard work and the meetings that we've had consistently. Be quite frank with you, it's a sad day for Oslo Park. I will say that this is a sign of the times, and for this body going forward, please keep in mind the increase in the prices. If we don't act now, later, they will be much more expensive. I was at all of the meetings with the Oslo Park Initiative. Adi and his team certainly advertised, notified, and were certainly accommodating. Unfortunately, these things happen that we came up on the short end of the stick. It's sad that all of the work that this board has done, not to mention the Public Works staff, but being in District Four, I certainly feel like I'm prepared to make a decision on this. And unfortunately, it is part of staff's recommendation, and I agree and support, is to close out this portion, this initiative of the MSBU on Oslo Park paving, and come back at a later time to fight a better fight. That's my motion, sir.
Second on that. And I will say that it has been a journey. Thank you for recognizing. Commissioner O'Brien worked tirelessly, and I feel it was the will of the people to go forward until the price tag increased dramatically. It is heart-wrenching because you're this close. But I have to support that motion. Sometimes you need a tap on the shoulder to say, "Hey, I know what you want, but it's unreachable."
And I'd also like to thank Mr. Lonnie Ingram, who was instrumental in coming to our meetings, and the passion that this gentleman has in favor of, I believe he's lived there all of his life. And, you know, it's just, it's a little quid pro quo. This happened to so many good people that are there that wanted this and desired it. So going future, in the, going forward, Adi and I have spoken about some alternatives, and I can assure the Oslo Park residents that we will be examining any other options that may be less expensive.
You're right. They put in a lot of time, and many of them showed it, but by the same token, that original, some of the original individuals have heard and said, "That's far unattainable for us."
Correct.
So it is the will of the people. So thank you once again. So it is the will of the people, so thank you once again. Anything further? We have a motion by Vice Chairman Lo, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Heavy heart. Thank you. Well, we'll move on to county attorney matters. Item fourteen A is the demolition lien reduction for forty-five forty-one, Thirty-Eighth Court, Burberry, Florida, three two nine six seven. Councillor?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Susan Prado, Deputy County Chair, on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Yes, my office was contacted by the new owner of the property located at forty-five forty-one, Thirty-Eighth Court, seeking a reduction in a building demolition lien. I believe the new owner is present. He asked to be present to go ahead and seek this reduction. The lien amount originally was for four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. As of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, when this issue first came up, the demolition lien and interest was eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. In past, the board has reduced the demolition liens down to about the lien itself and ten percent of the outstanding interest. In this case, that would be five thousand three oh two dot eighty-seven. I'll wait to, I'm not sure if he, if the new owner has anything he wants to address with you, but our recommendation would be to follow along with the board's history of reducing the lien down to the lien amount plus the ten percent interest. Thank you.
Administrator?
Yes, I, good afternoon. I purchased this piece of lien through a tax deed auction about a year and a half ago to, it was an investment for my kid. And when I purchased the lot, when I purchased the land, there were several lien on that lot. The over, the overgoing lead at was for fifty grand, and the utility liens alone, I'm making, was over fifty thousand dollars, and I'm making payment, well, that was reduced to eight thousand. I'm making payment of three hundred dollars a month on the utility liens alone. The overgoing weed, last time I was here, Ms. Buck helped me, and that was reduced to five thousand dollars, and I still have to pay that. So it's just, it was an investment that I wanted to make for my kids, and it turned out to be one of the, probably one of the worst investments that I've ever made. And I'm just trying to see if I can get some help. It's been very stressful dealing with the utility company, and, I mean, since I took, since I, all of it, which is lien that I inherited from the previous owner. And I just wanted to do the right thing. I even, you know, consulted an attorney to help me out. He, it got so bad that he advised that I signed the deed back to the county. I just couldn't get anywhere. And I'm, we're making progress. I'm making progress, and just want to see if I can get some help.
At the beginning, I didn't catch your name and address for the record.
My name is Dadi Tien, and I'm the owner of four five four one Thirty-Eighth Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor, you have any?
Just want to make sure that that reduction is contingent on, that so long as it's paid within sixty days, and that's the same kind of contingency we've had on all our prior reductions. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, at least as far as the recommendation from staff. Thank you.
And you understand that?
Not quite. So can you go over that? Can you repeat again, please?
Yes, sir. So in the past, the board has given this reduction to other members of the public when they have come forward on a similar building demolition lien, and the requirement has been, it will get reduced down to the original amount, which is the four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven and thirty-eight cents, plus ten percent of the interest that's accrued. And that would have to be paid within sixty days from the date of today. And that's how the board has functioned previously and historically, is that it's upon the contingency. If it's not paid within the sixty days from today, then it goes back up to the full amount, which is the, I'm sorry, eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
I understand. I just don't have the saving. I just don't have the fund. Just, I just don't have the fund to pay that amount.
So, so sir, what you're stating is that if it was found in your favor to reduce the penalty, you would not be able to satisfy within that time period the payment, as well as any action taken for the property? It is unreachable?
Within the sixty days, I don't have, I don't know how am I going to come up with the amount to pay within sixty days the four thousand dollars?
And why, why are we here?
Has there been dialogue between the two parties?
Yes, there has been some intermittent dialogue, Commissioners. I had spoken first with his attorney, and then his attorney seemed to have fallen off at the wayside, and then the last bit I got was, yes, they want to continue with lien reduction, and that's the last bit that I heard of this. It's, while the request is that it be done within the sixty days, that's something, I mean, that's what the board has historically done. We recommend that the board stick with that, but that's still up to the board's discretion, I think, if you wanted to do it longer than that, shorter than that, but that's just historically what has been done.
And has the gentleman owned the property since 2015?
No, no, sir. I own the, I purchased the property through a tax deed sale about a year.
So you bought it with the lien?
Yes, yes, I bought it with the lien. I was not aware. When I purchased the lien, I was not aware. There was so many lien on that lot. I just didn't know. It's just.
So you knew about the lien when you bought it?
When I found out, and there was, there were several lien, so I was, you know, we're making progress. I was trying to handle one lien at a time. Last time I was here, I've gotten some help from the board with the overgoing lead, the overgoing lien. Ms. Buck helped me present my case here.
Yes.
Yeah. And.
But you, today you said you won't be able to satisfy this, so why would we be taking that action? Why would we take action that you stated today that you won't be able to satisfy it?
I was, I didn't, I was hoping I would get, just, I was hoping the lien would.
We can't just make the lien go away. So what we've done in the past is, is reduced it as much as we can to cover the administrative costs, which is what this is. So we can't, if the expectation is for us to waive the lien in its entirety, we can't really, we can't do that. This is the best we can do. If six months or sixty days, I mean, are you able to pay it at all?
I don't, I don't know where I'm going to get the fund.
I understand, but I just don't know where to get the. And councillor, what is the final number on that, on the, again?
The final number.
The reduced number?
The reduced number is five thousand three hundred and two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So you're, you're saying that there's no shot at you getting the five thousand dollars together in two months?
I don't have the saving. I just, I don't know where to get it. I don't, I mean.
I think I heard you say that you're making payments on a utility lien currently?
The utility lien, yeah, I'm making payment. That was forty grand, and they reduced it to nine thousand dollars. I'm making payment of three hundred a month.
And have you missed any of those payments?
I just, actually, I just started.
You just started, okay. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we do something different than what we've done in the past, but he's making payments on a utility lien. I don't know if there's a way.
We can consolidate?
Consolidate, or, I don't know what that looks like. I'm just trying to offer some type of solution to clear the title. Whether he knew about the lien or not when he purchased it, the fact of the matter is, we have a property that's, you know, I don't know.
And you?
So the, I, the lien, sorry, the property was purchased and quit clean deed on December fourth, twenty twenty-four by Ms. Louise Wild, and it was quit clean deemed to Mr. Dadi Junior Tene. And this, the conversation that I had with Mr. Tene's attorney, it was my understanding that they were able to pay the larger amount, but they wanted the smaller amount. I was never advised that they couldn't pay either amount. So this is the first time that I am hearing of this. So I do want to apologize to the board. If I would have known that, I would have.
First time you're hearing of that inability to pay?
Yes, the inability to pay and the fact that they're wanting it wiped completely. That was not relayed to me.
So you would not have presented this at this time?
I believe it's, I would suggest, no, that we don't reduce the lien. I think they have the ability to ask, but it doesn't mean that I have to bring the item. Usually, the items are brought by staff when they're in agreement with something. We'd be in agreement with releasing it down to the five thousand three hundred two, which is the lien amount and the ten percent. But other than that, usually the public, they able to come forward on a public discussion item or ask that an item be brought then at a later time. Yes, sir.
And the purpose in reducing the lien, getting the lien reduced so that you can go forward and build?
Yes, in the future, and I would, yeah, I would love, like to build on the property, and I'm not sure how I'm going to do that, but I would love to, but since I took over the property, I've been maintaining the property. I've been doing all the right things, so, yeah, I would love to build on the property, but I'm, don't know what to do.
You don't have the funds to build, so I, and again, I'd like to see it, to get into something that will put you upward, but by the same token, you purchased the property knowing it had a lien?
Oh, I did not know there was a lien on the property.
No, you said earlier.
I was not aware. I was not aware of any lien. I purchased it through a tax deed. I didn't know.
The day you bought it, though, you said you found out, right?
Not the exact same day. I start, I start receiving letters.
Right.
And.
I said a little while after that. So it had, it has a substantial lien. That's one of the due diligence of buying a property in the manner in which you purchased it. Little research covers the lien. I wanted to see, to get you in a positive way with this, but today you admit that you can't pay it, and you have no intentions on building. I don't see the reason why. Just leave it be the way it is and just continue to pay the utility lien, and when you're ready, that's when you could do it. I don't know if today's your day.
Yeah, I, you mentioned that I was not aware, the demolition lien, I just found out was, I found out about it maybe two, two months ago. I was not aware.
Can I, I just?
Yes.
Say something, like, I understand that people should do their due diligence when they go to a tax sale, but I also understand that for some people, it is an attractive opportunity to try to get property for less, and then when you get it, all these things start coming, and now you're kind of stuck. You thought you were maybe making a good decision and helping out yourself, and, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. But I think today, what I'm hearing is he's not, he would like to build, but he doesn't have the money to build when he's trying to deal with all the liens, so that might be, that might come later on. And I think for us, what we need to decide is, do we want to try to figure out a way to help him maintain his property that he went out and purchased, or are we just going to say, no, you know, too bad, so sad, and just deal with it later? I would prefer, since he is at least making an effort to come forward and try to address it, whether, I'm not interested in, like, assigning fault in this. I'm just interested in trying to figure out a resolution, and I don't, if we, if we waive, not waive it, but reduce it to the ninety percent, which is our standard, down to five thousand dollars, that covers whatever administrative costs. I don't know if that, again, my suggestion would be, if we want to resolve it today, roll that into whatever same payment plan the utilities is doing, and just get it done. Otherwise, he's, you know, he's not going to come up with five thousand dollars. There's a lot of people in this community that couldn't come up with five thousand dollars in two months if they tried. So I don't, that is the state of the economy, and it is what it is. So I don't know if you could pay a higher payment a month, if that were something that would happen, but I guess, Susan, what you're saying is the only reason you're suggesting this reduction is because you were under the impression that he could pay that in sixty days. So if he cannot pay that in sixty days, are you still, would you still have suggested the reduction with a payment plan like we do for utilities?
Not unless this board specifically instructed it, because we usually go off past precedent in practice, and in attempting to try to treat all people equally. The question is, is the board could do something different for this particular individual, but if they do, then it's setting a precedent for future individuals coming forward. So that's, that's not a decision that I would be able to make. I don't make the policy decisions, and that's a decision that the board would be able to make.
Right. So for my fellow Commissioners, I understand that we set policy, and we set precedent, and we also can change that policy and that precedent at our pleasure. But this gentleman is not, this is not a code enforcement situation that he brought upon himself. This is a property that was sitting there and had gone back, and we're going to see this time and time again in areas of our county. And do we encourage people to pick those up and try to make them usable again, or are we just going to let them sit there? And that's kind of where we are. This is what this represents to me, so I don't see why we have to be so onerous sometimes.
No, it's not onerous. It's a matter of, you know, there is, you said you get the due diligence. When you buy a property with the lien at the courthouse, it's available to you as to what the burdens are on the property. You may say some people aren't aware. It's good argument, but the bottom line is, you know what it costs to build? If someone cannot satisfy five thousand dollars, do you know what it costs to build on the property? So there's going to be no building anyway. So what's the point in even dealing with this at this point?
I try to, I mean, I even try and sell it. I would, if I try and sell it, I would, I would lose money. I would, I mean, I would.
Well, you can sell it because it's got a lien on it. So, I mean, you're stuck with it either way.
If we take the lien off and get it paid, then we could, we could sell the property. Again, there were many that came before us, and again, I know you said we continue to do the same thing. We could change policy. This is not the very first, nor the second, nor the third. And there have been many, many individuals, and specifically when it comes to buying a tax lien property or a deed, a deed to a property that has quite an attachment, and most say they didn't know.
One quick question. I didn't buy it.
Is this the only property that you purchased in the, in the county?
I have another lot, but it was the same thing. It's two tax deed auction.
That's what I'm.
Not, not at the courthouse. The auction I held online, and.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
It's not the physical courthouse, but that's what it's about.
Yeah, but I didn't, I never, I was not aware. It wasn't, I bought two properties one after the other at the same times, the auctions, but I was not aware. I didn't know. I.
Susan?
I've talked to Ms., I've emailed Attorney Schuler and trying to get some help regarding that when it first got it, and I just couldn't, I just couldn't get anywhere.
Could you pay the fifty-three oh two in six, in a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days, which is four, three months or six months?
I'll use up all my, I just don't have enough funds. I, my money's gone. I just, I'm making payment, the utility, I just don't have my bills for my retail, for my regular job. It's just not enough. retail, for my regular job. It's just not enough.
How long are you paying the utilities?
I just, I just started paying.
And how many months?
For two years.
For two years.
Two years. I have to pay.
And that was forty thousand dollars?
No, it was forty. It's been reduced to nine thousand. They were, they reduced it to nine thousand.
Okay.
Mister, Mister Chair, may I?
Counselor.
I, one, one thing to consider perhaps is simply stopping the interest, because if the board does nothing, then the interest continues to accrue and snowball. And I I do think that there's maybe a need at some point to have a discussion about these liens that get huge and then become an obstacle to land changing hands or positive things happening. So I I just wanted to throw that out there as a possibility if the board was inclined to do anything.
No, and ninety percent of the time, the, that's why property is available for auction because it is unsellable, unusable, unusable and beyond anybody's capability to go forward. So they just let it take it away. I can't, can't even begin to articulate how many, how many have come to the office or have come to your office and said, I I need a break here. But, I mean, if that's a moving forward to reduce any further penalties and stop the clock. I think that's a noble gesture and bringing it, I I just don't know how he pays everything. He said today that he cannot pay anything at all. That means that you have no ability to build. Yeah, it's one or the other. I mean, you know, if you had the ability to build and you offset it by five thousand dollars and pay this off, that would be a very easy decision. But there's no future in the property at this point. We're just looking at just reduce the burden.
So at this point, then, I think what we would need to hear is either the board is making a motion to not reduce or reduce and then give him those sixty days if you're not willing to make any changes. Or if you wanted to, or someone wanted to suggest a change in policy, just something so I know which way to proceed with this one. If anyone has a motion or a thought.
I, I do like the counsel's idea of 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 stopping the pain. Just taking it out of growth mechanism so that we can stop the clock. But those fines still remain. But I can't make motions.
I would give him a hundred and twenty days to pay it with no additional interest, but if he can't pay it, if you can't pay that, I don't, I don't know what options. What, what can you do?
Well, we can help him out by stopping, stopping the additional interest that is going to now grow exponentially at that number, because if we're not reducing it to five thousand dollars.
Give him a hundred and twenty days.
It's, so actually, no, I, I want to, I think what what counsel is suggesting, and I agree, if we just stop the, and if we're allowed to do it, if we can stop the interest compounding on this so that at least the future burden will be what it is and not exponentially higher, because now this is going to start compounding greatly. So I I think that's a step in the right direction for him today. It gives him a benefit. It's still a lot of money. And that's not reducing it by to the five thousand mark because he can't pay it. But at least stop the bleeding, the action, stop the bleeding. And he's still left with that larger burden. Maybe in the future, if he has a some financial endeavor or gain or success, that he could come back to this appeal moment at this time. Otherwise, he's got to go forward. So not suggesting that we reduce the fine, just stop the penalty portion of it, so it doesn't continue to grow and get well out of reach.
I make a motion to stop the penalty, top the interest portion of the bill.
Mister Chair, if I can ask this part of a question.
Yes, please.
When was the last correspondence you had with his attorney?
A number of weeks, probably maybe three weeks ago, his attorney said for me to start dealing with him directly because he was no longer representing him. But the last correspondence I had was saying yes, that they would like to get whatever was the lesser amount if they could get it.
That was recently or a few months ago?
That would have been back in April, sir. April, I'm sorry. I have the date here. It was contacted, I believe, April third, April, yes, April third.
So, sir, at some point you you had an attorney involved?
I, yeah, I had the attorney to help me quiet the title. To help me quiet the title and he quieted the title. It was just, he was, the the title got quieted, but he was just helping me communicating with.
Did you have to pay the attorney?
Yeah, to quiet the title, I had to pay him. Yeah, I paid him two thousand dollars to quiet the title. That was about a year ago. To with my credit, a credit card.
And you you had discussions with your attorney about these liens?
Well, when I, my, my thing is when I, I, my whole idea is quieting the title that all the lien would go away. And I was not aware and the lien and that did not happen. And then he was, he was just trying to help me.
So when you, when you bought this property, there was no mention of any liens on it?
Say that again?
When you bought the property, was there any mentions of any liens?
I, I, no, I had no idea. I had no clue there was the most, the most demolition lien. I had, I had no clue there were overgrown lien, overgrown weed lien on that property and I was, I had no clue there were utility lien. I had no idea until I received, I still receive, I started to receive a phone call and a letter from the utility company and.
Is this the first property you bought online?
Yes, that was the very first one I bought online, yes.
And it doesn't describe or disclose any liens attached or a cloud to the title?
No, no, it does not say that.
It usually, it usually basically says you have to do your own research into that.
Yes.
That's correct.
So it doesn't indicate.
So at what point did you immediately cure the, remedy the code enforcement issues that were on the property, the overgrown weeds?
I, that was, I, well, my attorney, I, I guess, I I receive a letter that there were lien on that lot that he can help me. And then from Orlando, he's an attorney from Orlando, I don't know how he found out. I receive a letter that you purchased, that I purchased a piece of lot and there were lien. And then when I call him up, that's when he gave me a list of the liens.
But you're maintaining the property, so it's not, there's not weeds and overgrown grass.
Oh, yeah, I'm doing that every.
Which is a benefit to having someone who doesn't walk away from the property.
Oh, yeah, I've been doing the right thing. I've been, you know.
Blossom into a code enforcement, new code enforcement problem.
Yes.
I mean, I'm happy to, I would prefer that the motion was more than just waiving of of the interest, because I'm just feeling benevolent today and I just think it's would be a good thing to try to help this gentleman. And I understand it'd be setting new precedent. I accept that. But I do think sometimes our role is to help people. And we are the court of last resort for some of this stuff. So I don't, if he's willing to pay and he needs more time and it puts the property back into something that's usable and then maybe you know, he can get clear title and he can get a loan and he can get a house and you're trying to do it for your children. I mean, I don't know. I just think it's the right thing to do and maybe that doesn't make sense and that's not a legal argument, but I would prefer to do more if that's all you guys are willing to do, you know.
How about?
I can second that, but I.
Change my motion, sir, from no, no interest in pay it within one year?
I'll be happy to second that.
So would, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. If you're saying waiving the interest and pay it within one year, are you leaving it at the eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two, no additional interest and pay it within one year? Or are you reducing it down to the fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
Okay, that, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
Fifty, fifty-three.
Okay.
Fifty-three oh two, pay it within one year, no additional interest after today.
Yeah, within one year I can, I can save up and do what I can.
I will second that.
Okay, and just sorry, one more further clarification. I apologize. No more interest after one year and if within one year he doesn't pay, does it revert back or you're talking no more interest period? I want to make sure that I'm clear.
You're making it complicated.
I apologize. I just want to make sure I'm doing it correctly.
Pay the fifty-three oh two, no more interest after today. He has to pay it within one year.
Okay.
From today.
Okay.
If it's not paid within one year from today, then I would say all bets are off.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Are off, does that mean that the clock goes back?
Crude intent, sir.
That's.
What if he sells? I don't, I don't know. I can't predict.
It's the five point seven five per year.
So it shouldn't be a problem, but if he can't, then I guess it's going to come back to us.
Susan?
Yes, I do now.
The attorney understands the motion. You, there's a second, you can pay it within a year. We have to vote, though.
I have to just save, I mean, I have to save up and come up.
What is that again?
I have to save and and I, I have to save money too. Yeah, I can.
So going forward, if this is voted on in a positive light, you have one year to pay the existing fee of five thousand dollars.
I will do whatever I can. I will do whatever I can to come up with that. To come up with the five thousand dollars within a year.
Otherwise, it's going to revert back.
To the eight thousand and then accrue the five point seven five per year of interest, yes.
You understand?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
That's your motion?
Yes.
That's my second.
And that's your second?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel, it's doable.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, that is doable.
Okay. All right. Favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? That was a no?
Yeah.
Motion passes four to one with our law dissenting.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have direction. Thank you.
The next item is from the attorney's office, which is the resolution merging Public Safety Coordinating Councils. Counselor.
Yes, thank you. Currently, Indian River County has two Public Safety Coordinating Councils. One is, and they have different statutory purposes. One's called the Public Safety Coordinating Council and then the other has the longer name, Public Safety Council for Criminal Justice, Mental Health and Substance Abuse. And and there is significant overlap in the membership. Everyone who serves on the Public Safety Coordinating Council also serves on the larger, on the larger Public Safety Coordinating Council, which is Criminal Justice, Mental Health and Substance Abuse. It's just got additional members. So they do have two different statutory purposes, but in reading Florida statutes, I believe that you can merge these two councils into one and allow them to, because the larger committee has the same membership as the smaller committee. And you can merge them and and have those, that one council serve both statutory purposes. So that's my first recommendation, that you do that because one is really meeting and one is not effectively meeting. My second recommendation is that Commissioner Adams had brought an item of interest and she was interested in having an opioid and substance use task force and that being explored. And I have explored it with Thrive. I did sit down and meet with them and then having discussions with Thrive. I think that they ultimately came to the conclusion that they'd prefer to have an, continue to have an informal working group and that would mean that they wouldn't have to have a board that has all the bureaucratic things that come along with it, this, this Public Records Act, Sunshine Law and all these things that make them maybe less flexible. So what I did here is I tried to put it all together and I brought you a resolution and this resolution before you, and there is a member of Thrive here in case the board has any questions of Thrive. This resolution would abolish the Public Safety Coordinating Council. It would merge the Public Safety Coordinating Council with the Public Safety Council for Criminal Justice, Mental Health and Substance Abuse. It clarifies that the pub, this larger Public Safety Council would carry out the purposes of both Florida statutes nine five one point two six and three nine four point six five seven. And additionally, it adds to that larger body, the duty of making recommendations to the board for the use of of funds received from opioid litigation and receiving the reports from any formal or informal opioid and substance use task force. So my, that's what I have before you. Do you, do you have questions?
Any questions of counsel? Once again, we've had that first and foremost for the first part is that, yes, one board truly doesn't meet. And so that was so easily done. I would have supported anything that Thrive, if Thrive wanted to go in that other direction for a task force, but it is encumbering. It's an encumbering endeavor as well. And then there are certain obligations that they might lose their effectiveness by having to develop their, their own committee. The advocacy that they provide, I think, is far more warranted where it is with public safety. So thank you. Any other, any questions? Yes, smile and make a motion. Smile and make a motion. Insert motion.
Hi, Carrie Lester, the CEO of Thrive. I just want to acknowledge and thank all of you for listening to us in our, all of our meetings and Jennifer for your work on this. For us, it's just really important that there is a dedicated place and space within the county to receive those updates, those reports and and keeping our eye on substance use disorders, the data, the needs and the funding opportunities. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue our work in the community, but have a funnel back to the county so that we have a coordinated effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. And you said what?
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Everybody's got their own microphone? All right, one in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I thought you'd come in because we just lost the committee.
Less work for you.
No, no, that's the one you were assigned to. The one I'm assigned to is still active. We meet Friday. But we'll have something to bring to the table. They're the only game in town now. All right, so you have a little more free time. I think. All right, and then the next item is. All right, and then the next item is the interlocal agreement regarding Humiston Boardwalk Project and we have attachments.
Yes. Commission, back in January, the board approved a committing to participate in the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project. The board approved staff's recommendation at the time, which was to contribute up to $400,000 towards the Humiston Beach Boardwalk Project with the county's contribution not to be more than the city's portion of funding for the project and excluding federal or state grants or appropriations towards the project. And then I was directed to draft this participation agreement, which I did. And the attached agreement you have in front of you outlines that contribution and in the specific language that the board approved it, it specifies that the money should, shall only be used for construction costs for the boardwalk, including ADA improvements and two pavilions. And then it sets up the payment procedures. The term would commence upon approval of the agreement and it would run until the boardwalk project is completed. All funds incurred by the city are paid and any federal or state appropriations are received so there could be a final accounting on that part of it. The City of Vero Beach Council did consider this interlocal at their May 13th meeting and they did approve it. So my recommendation is that the board approve this, this interlocal agreement.
Thank you, counselor.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hehman, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you for the work, counselor.
Yay.
Oh, good to see you. All right, being urged for a break before we do the final, final run.
Oh, no.
One.
We could totally get this done.
Okay, watch. All right, you guys are going to have to hold it then. Hold the break.
Watch this.
Okay, let's, let's try it. Okay. All right, we'll move on now to the Solid Waste Disposal District, the approval of the SWID meeting minutes for January 28, 2025, which you all read.
You want to do them all together?
No.
Separately, move approval.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Approval of the SWID meeting minutes of February 11.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next item is the approval of the SWID meeting minutes of March 11, 2025.
You have approval.
From a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Amendment number one, work order for number two to Jones Edmonds for the 74th Avenue Southwest Widening Project.
You have approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams and seconded by Commissioner Hehman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 16B5 is work order number eight, the geocentric for prepare, preparation of the air operation permit, including visible emission testing.
You have approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, there is nothing further for the greater good of Indian River County. This meeting is adjourned.